Hey Brian.
Hey Melissa, how you doing?
Good, I want to give you a heads up. I just tried to go in through the dial-in number. Oh, I see. I did, I think I did something wrong with the dial-in, never mind. I did the dial-in number instead of the meeting ID, so never mind. I thought there was an error, but I think the error was user error, so never mind.
Okay.
Yay!
Yay.
I'm gonna grab something from the other room, but I'll be back.
Sounds good.
Hey Jesse.
Hi Brian, how are you?
Doing well, thank you.
Happy Wednesday.
Yeah, same to you.
Thanks.
So we'll wait for everybody to get here before I let everybody else in.
So I am a huge fan of bathroom breaks during long meetings.
I am too. I think we kind of did, I think we got it last meeting okay. I think we took two, so hopefully, help nudge me if I, if I forget, please.
My body will nudge us all.
Yeah, mine probably will too. I've sitting here with my big glass of water.
Right, that's what I do. So it will force us to get up.
Exactly, exactly.
Brian, I want to give you a, I said it last night, the commission meeting, and I'll say it again tonight. I just really appreciate all the heavy lifting you've been doing on behalf of the board, organizing the comments and everything for us.
Thank you, appreciate it.
It's a lot of work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job Brian, thank you.
Thank you.
Huge deal.
Let's see, I think we've got everyone except for Shannon here.
Hey Brian, I just talked to Shannon and he said he was gonna be a couple minutes late. He was having a meeting this afternoon, so he should be here shortly, but you can start without him if you'd like to.
Okay, thank you.
Hello everybody.
Hey, how's it going?
Good.
Gosh, we've only got four people waiting in the wings compared to 50 last time.
I had 55.
Yeah, I think that was the most I, I put it in the minutes. I put the, what the biggest, the highest count was. I think I was about it, it was about 55. Okay, now they're starting to roll in.
I want to say hi to Scott too. Hey Scott, and we passed a zoning thing last night about easements and setbacks and all the fun stuff that people like you might like.
ADU related?
No, related to like, how far can you encroach and space, you know what I mean, into past the setback? It's getting in the weeds in a good way. So heads up if you haven't seen that, I can forward you the agenda if you ever want it.
You haven't issued a CO, maybe we could retroactively address some of those. Just kidding, it's not gonna happen.
Take it to the planner, Matthew's on. It's good though, it was good.
He knows that we need bumpers as a town. As he chuckles.
Quick muted himself, no I'm just kidding.
Didn't really want you guys to have to listen to me eating my soup here.
Is this your office Matthew, or is this your house?
This is my house.
Okay, because they describe you being in a closet or something.
Yeah, I'm in, we're in sort of a weird setup right now, but yeah, this is my house and I'm using my computer, that's why there's skis in the background, which I don't store in my office.
You should. Go for a ski at lunch. Okay everybody, I'm showing 5:30. I'm gonna go ahead and open up the barn doors here and let everybody cluster in. Now we're starting to get some folks. We'll go ahead and start without Shannon, he'll probably be joining here shortly, but he's heard this intro a few times anyway, so he won't miss much, I don't think so. Okay, I'm admitting all, so we'll get him going here. Hi everybody, please bear with me a little bit as I'm admitting folks into the Zoom conference. Get started here in a minute.
Hello all.
Okay, I'll, I'll be keeping an eye on the queue here and letting people in as they pop in, so excuse me if I take a short break in my, in my spiel as I, as I let folks in. Okay, everybody, welcome. This is the City of Livingston City Planning Board meeting. Actually, this is a public hearing on the Livingston growth policy. This is our third meeting. To start off, we're going to take roll call. Scott Wiseback.
President.
Stacy Jovick.
Present.
Shannon Holmes, have you joined yet? Nothing heard. He's joining us a little bit later, he'll be here in a minute. Jesse Wilcox.
President.
Melissa Newt.
I'm here.
And I am your chair, Brian Conkle, I am here. Also in attendance is Deputy Planning Manager Matthew Menard. Okay, before proceeding any further, we want to do an approval of the last meeting minutes. Could I get somebody to make a motion to approve, please?
I move, I still move. Oh, hang on. I still move.
Okay, thank you Stacy. Do we have a second?
I'll second, this is Jesse.
Jesse, any, any conversation about that before we go with the vote? Okay, nothing heard. So vote all in favor of approving last meeting's minutes, say aye.
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 Any, excuse me. Any disapprovals? Okay, ayes have it, thank you. Okay, as we've been doing for each of these public hearings, I'm gonna start off with a few comments, so please bear with me and again, I'll still continue to bring folks in as they arrive. Good evening and thank you for participating in this Planning Board public hearing on Livingston growth policy. Prior to the public comments and board deliberations, I want to take a few minutes to describe the growth policy, the board's role, the process the board will be developing, excuse me, the board will take in developing a recommendation to the city commission. What is a growth policy? The requirements for growth policy are defined in Montana Code and annotated or MCA Section 76-1-601 through 76-1-607. Specifically, these are, these are my highlights, says the governing body must be guided and, must be guided by and give consideration to the general policy and pattern of development set out in the growth policy in the A, authentication, excuse me, authorization, construction, alteration, or abandonment of public ways, public places, public structures, or public utilities. B, authorization, acceptance, or construction of water mains, sewers, connections, facilities, or utilities, and C, adoption of zoning ordinances or resolutions. A growth policy is not a regulatory document. A governing body may not withhold, deny, or impose conditions on any land use approval or other authority to act based solely on compliance with a growth policy. For those of you that have been in the previous public hearings, I do, I did just recently learn that there is a new Montana Growth Policy Resource Book. Thank you Melissa for that. That was dated October 2020, so I have a new reference from there versus the old one that I've been stating in the prior meetings. So this states, a growth policy is essentially a dynamic, long-range plan meant to help guide the development of a city, town, or county, and identify policies and projects that it will use to influence its physical, economic, social, and environmental character. A growth policy is not a regulatory tool and cannot be used solely to make decisions on proposed land use, projects, or development. That being said, a growth policy can provide the legal basis for the adopting or updating of zoning or subdivision regulations which can be used to achieve the goals of the plan. Okay. As approved by the city commission, the city contracted Burton Planning Services to complete the city growth policy. The policy development process is described in the introduction and the public participation is described in Appendix B. Excuse me. What is the planning board's responsibility with a growth policy? MCA 76-1-602 states, prior to the submission of the proposed growth policy to the governing bodies, the board shall give notice and hold a public hearing on this growth, on the growth policy. MCA 76-1-603 then goes on to state that after consideration of the recommendations and suggestions elicited in the public hearing, the planning board shall by resolution, one, recommend the proposed growth policy and any proposed ordinances and resolutions for its implementation to the governing bodies, two, recommend that a growth policy not be adopted, or three, recommend that the governing body take some other action related to preparation of a growth policy. In addition, the city of, excuse me, the Livingston City Commission requested the board provide a recommendation in time for them to include it as a January commission meeting agenda topic. What is the planning board's schedule? In order to meet the MCA and city commission requirements, the planning board initially planned to conduct four public hearings, all of which would be conducted virtually over the Zoom platform. These meetings were scheduled for November 4th and 18th, and December 2nd and 16th. The planning board originally intended to vote on a final growth policy recommendation to the city commission at the December 16th meeting, however, that will be reevaluated and discussed at this evening's meeting. Just one note for those of you that were participating in the last public hearing, we did take a vote then to provide a memo to the commission requesting a pause and edit. Due to some procedural issues, we determined after the fact that that vote was not valid, so we will be revisiting that this evening. How does the public provide inputs for planning board consideration? The proposed growth policy is available on the City of Livingston website at livingstonmontana.org. Once there, you will see an alert box that will navigate you to a growth policy page. In this location, the public can download a copy of the plan and can also provide written comments via the community feedback form. In addition, the public will be able to provide input during the public comment period at each of the public hearings. When providing inputs, it is requested that you, if you have a specific comment about a particular section of plan, that you provide a page number or some other reference. What is the public hearing process? At each public hearing, the planning board recorder will make their best effort to accurately document the comments of each speaker into a tracking spreadsheet developed by the planning board. After the public comment period of each meeting, the board will deliberate to consider the recommendations and suggestions received in both written form and verbally. The board will then vote on a final recommendation at the last public hearing. After the vote, the board chair will document the recommendation in a memorandum to the city commission. Included with this memo will be all public comments and entered into a spreadsheet and categorized as best as possible. And Shannon Holmes is joining us now for the record. During the meeting, it is requested that you do not use the chat function in Zoom. Also, it is requested that you keep your microphone on mute unless you are speaking to limit distractions. So, at this time, we will now proceed with public comments. When called upon, please provide your full name and physical address. You will be given four minutes to provide any comments before we must move on to give others time to speak. Excuse me, it is requested that if you have a specific comment about a particular section in the plan, that you provide a page number or some other reference. Also, to respect everyone's time, is requested you don't repeat comments already made. If you agree or disagree with a prior statement, you may just identify that then and move on with any additional comment that you may have. Finally, please indicate you have a, excuse, I put question here, but if you have a comment you'd like to make, please do so by raising your quote "virtual hand" in Zoom. So to do that, in the lower right-hand corner of your Zoom screen, you'll find three dots. If you have, if you, if you select that, you should see the ability to, to raise your hand. I will call upon you to then make your comment. One other comment as well, everybody will only get one opportunity to make a public comment, we won't go back and revisit that, so, so please make your four minutes count. So, let's go ahead and get started with the first comment, please. If anybody has any, please, again, raise your virtual hand. And we're going to start off with Frank Schroeder, if you would, please tell us your, repeat your name and give us your address and make your comment, please.
Good evening, my name is Frank Schroeder. I'm Chair of the Board of the Friends of Park County. My address is 477 Millcrick Road in Prey, and I've been a resident, full-time resident for the past 20 years. We at Friends of Park County recognize that, that you on the planning board are wrestling with how best to proceed on the draft, draft growth policy. And in our opinion, we believe that your highest and now your most important responsibility is to provide your opinions on critical policy issues to the city commission. This is the essential advisory capacity that Brian talked about in the Montana State Code. So, the statutes also specify that you are to carry out your advisory role through adoption of a resolution. We've previously transmitted some proposed language for a growth policy resolution, and I hope you have that available now. These draft, that draft resolution reflects several of the policy recommendations we made to you at your last meeting on November 18th. To summarize, they are, to make infill and redevelopment the highest priority for accommodating future growth. This includes expanded efforts to continue the revitalization of Livingston's celebrated downtown. And to go off script for a second, nothing gives me greater pleasure than when I am walking down the streets of Livingston, head held high, eyes straight out, saying hello or acknowledging people that we might not know, just to indicate the friendliness and the openness of a small town. I hope we keep that. So other recommendations are to confirm that future growth will be accommodated within the existing and certainly spacious city limits, based on land and housing need and supply analysis, to be submitted to the city commission by June 2021, and then updated every five years. Now the recommendation was to protect the remaining wild and natural features of the Yellowstone River and its riparian areas from the effects of nearby development, from overuse by new boat access points, pedestrian and bike paths, recreation facilities, and the like. Well, the recommendation is to set a few clear priorities for implementation steps for the growth policy over the next 18 months. We believe it is not essential for you to achieve unanimity on the points in the resolution. Even a divided vote provides useful guidance to the city commission. We also believe it is not essential that you vote on just our resolution, although we hope that you do. What we do believe is essential is that you move one or more resolutions articulating high-growth policies, debate them, and then vote. That concludes my remarks, and I would respectfully request, Mr. Chair, that you allow our consultants, Robert Liberty and Dennis Click, to follow me with the remaining parts of my testimony. Thanks to all members of the board for your time and commitment to our city. Thank you.
Thank you Frank. Yeah, well, we will, we'll go next to Robert Liberty. If you would, please state, state your name and your address and then start your comments, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Conkle. Good evening. My name is Robert Liberty. My address is thirty-four thirty-one Southeast Tivet Street, Portland, Oregon. I'm a consultant to Friends of Park County and am testifying on their behalf. I know some of you may wonder what my qualifications are for giving advice on planning matters here. I have almost forty years of planning experience from the local level to the metropolitan state and national levels across the United States and in other countries. I've worked with citizen groups in Wasilla, Alaska, the Chamber of Commerce in Waco, Texas, and redevelopers in Wichita, Kansas. I'm currently helping with downtown revitalization of city in California that is one-tenth the size of Livingston. I've been a land use attorney, a nonprofit director, a county land use hearings officer, an elected official, and am currently the Chair of the Clumber Regorge National Scenic Area Commission. I've been to Western Montana many times. My last visit Livingston in September and was impressed with the progress you have been making. You are fortunate that you are developing a growth policy for a city that is already strong and successful with many human and natural assets. Friends of Park County believes you can maintain and increase those assets as you grow if you build on your traditional growth pattern through infill, redevelopment, and complex smart growth rather than sprawling outward. Last month, Ken Cochran of Friends of Park County testified that a simple analysis showed that at most you would need about four hundred acres of land to accommodate a fifty percent increase in housing units and that you already had a lot more vacant land than that inside the city. I did the residential land demand analysis and Randy Carpenter of Future West did the land supply analysis. Our back-of-the-envelope calculations were extremely conservative. They excluded hundreds of acres of vacant land inside the city and they assumed zero redevelopment. We'll send that analysis to you later this week. Friends of Park County's resolution you have before you calls on you to endorse a simple but thorough analysis of your land needs and land supply. Should be integrated with your housing need analysis and the updating of your zoning. You are confident it will show that you have more than enough land inside your city limits for decades of growth. The second point follows from the first. Friends strongly supports planning for your extraterritorial jurisdiction. The starting point for that analysis is not what could or should be developed, but identifying the areas that must be protected from development. These include areas in the historic Yellowstone River floodplain, areas with important natural resources such as wildlife habitat, working ranch and farmlands, areas with steep slopes, existing rural residential areas whose residents want to remain rural, areas at risk of groundwater depletion or water pollution, and areas that would be too expensive to serve with city facilities and services. These are some of the reasons we hope you will pass Friends of Park County's draft resolution to help the city move quickly in the right direction for managing its future growth. Dennis Glick from Future West will provide some additional testimony on behalf of Friends of Park County. Thank you for your time and attention. I know this is time-consuming work for volunteers, but it is much appreciated.
Well, thank you and good evening, everyone, especially the Planning Board. I'm Dennis Glick. I'm also a consultant with the Friends of Park County. I live in Livingston at four eleven South Yellowstone Street. I'd like to briefly comment on how the Burton policy document addresses the topic of the Yellowstone River. As the Friends of Park County testimony, which was submitted a few weeks ago noted, Yellowstone River is, quote, "the city's greatest natural amenity," and it's also its greatest natural hazard. It deserves to be better planned and protected. He noted from my street address, you'll realize that I live almost adjacent to Saca Juia Park in Yellowstone, and for the past thirty years, I've been privileged to have this world-class river, the longest undammed river in the lower forty-eight states, just about a five-minute walk from my house. It is, of course, a famous trout fishery that I've often taken advantage of, but its riparian habitat is also critically important, is a corridor for wildlife movement up and down the river. And I, and probably many of you, have observed everything from moose to bears right in town. It's truly an incredible natural feature and a priceless community asset. Now, the Burton draft does include some useful objectives and strategies related to the river. However, we feel that these are not adequate to ensure that the Yellowstone retains its incredibly unique natural qualities as it passes through town. Nor do these recommendations ensure that people and property will be protected from the potential of periodic flooding. Now, if you were around in the nineteen nineties, you may remember that we had serious back-to-black, back-to-back Yellowstone River floods. And the town was in a total panic and clamoring for an emergency levy, which the Corps of Engineers hastily built. After the waters receded, the then-Governor of Montana created a thing called the Upper Yellowstone River Task Force to learn all that it could about the river functions and its impacts on everything from the economy to wildlife. One of its findings was that from an ecological perspective, flooding is actually a good thing, keeps the river healthy. And if we want to maintain a healthy Yellowstone River, we need to allow it to do its thing, which includes flooding. They highly recommended that new building be restricted along the river through town. The Burton draft does recommend that development be, quote, "limited in the floodplain" through application of the Livingston floodplain regulations. But the problem is that these are based on floodplain maps that were significantly modified from the original Corps of Engineer floodplain maps, which included a much larger area. We believe that the plan can be strengthened in regards to how it addresses the long-term protection of the Yellowstone, its riparian habitats, and the people and property that could be in harm's way from this dynamic, ever-changing river. And I just wanted to close by mentioning that I've actually made it to the very headwaters of the Yellowstone on the flanks of a mountain called Yance Peak in the Washeki Wilderness, which is south of Yellowstone Park. It is a long, long ways from Livingston, and there is a vast watershed between our town and the headwaters. With no means of controlling spring runoff and increasingly erratic weather events, the threat of very significant flooding remains a real possibility. So let's make certain that our plans for growth recognize and respect this reality. Strengthening this aspect of the new Livingston growth policy would be a great place to start. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Tom Blue Rock. Please state your name and address and make your comment, please.
Point of order, Brian.
Yes, go ahead.
Can we make sure the folks are limiting to four minutes so we don't go over our time?
I've got the clock here. We, we've been doing it. I messed up on the second one. I forgot to stop the clock, but I'm, I am doing that. Thanks. Tom, go ahead, please.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. My name is Tom Blue Rock. I'm a resident of downtown. I live at one ten and a half South Main Street in downtown Livingston. I'm also a member of the Historic Preservation Commission of the city. And we held a meeting last, last week and have, would like to sort of read our comments into the record. We've submitted, we've submitted a letter, and I'll just sort of outline some of the fine points of that, some of that here. We believe that the, that the downtown is slightly underrepresented in the Burton study and would like to see more emphasis put on it as, as sort of the core, the core element of Livingston's growth. To that end, we would propose that a very detailed, serious study of the downtown area and, and including the redevelopment zone, which is defined by, by the redevelopment area, be included in that, not just the historic district. And this would be to the, excuse me?
Go ahead, sir. You're fun.
Okay. This, this part, this plan should be a parcel-by-parcel review of the properties in this area and should include but not be limited to the following items. Promote Historic Preservation Commission as a source of information and support. Support and increase grants from, from tax increment financing money for facade and structural upgrades. Identify specific development opportunities and encourage infill development for underutilized or vacant properties. Include housing densification, low-income housing and re, housing redevelopment in the downtown area. Reduce impact fees in town for revitalization and, and preservation. Include downtown second-story upper-floor development with incentives. Encourage historic tax credits. Encourage use of low-income housing tax credits. Create a da, create a downtown parking district or a study commission, which probably is part of this plan. Create a downtown traffic study. Work with, with, with park local development groups to encourage micro and standard loans. Encourage redevelopment, the Urban Renewal Agency resources to be more, more fully utilized. Promote economic development, urban revitalization as an historic prevention grant, preservation grants. Encourage accessory dwelling units where appropriate and revise policy language in other, and City of Livingston, other entities within the report to add the Historic Preservation Commission as another entity and create design standards for downtown development. To this end, there are a couple of, there are a couple of city policies that are in place that we believe are underutilized. Those are, there's a tax abatement policy, which was, which was put into place a couple of years ago, which allows for, for tax credits for people that develop downtown properties. And we think the Urban Renewal Agency, which is, which has been on the books since the early two thousands, could be more fully utilized, which develops tax increment financing to that effect. This, we think that the downtown can really, and the historic district can really be the core of the growth rather than the outlying areas and would encourage this to be more fully, fully expressed in the, in the downtown plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Michelle Ubaragua. If you would, please state your name, make, and your address and make your comments, please.
Hi, Brian. Thanks. My name is Michelle Ubaragua, and I live at seven eleven Lock Haven Drive in Livingston. I'm going to be quick and I don't want to repeat any comments that you've already heard. So I want to thank the previous commenters and just agree with the substance of prioritizing infill development in our downtown, protecting our riparian corridor in our open lands are priorities that I share. Mostly wanted to focus and just today thank the Planning Board for all your work. I know that the, the last hearing, there was significant public participation and a lot to talk about. And I'm really grateful that you've opened up these hearings, that you're listening to that public comment, and that you're acknowledging the time and energy that it's going to take to meaningfully read, respond, and incorporate those public comments into an updated growth policy. I, I just wanted to really thank you for acknowledging that and say that I think it's worth it to take the time necessary to get it right. You know, the community worked really hard, helped fundraise for this document. Like we heard from Burton Planning, there's been historic public participation. And, and so I just, I think that the Planning Board taking the time that you need and recognizing that you're volunteers, and so making that time is really hard, but that I think it'll be really worth it to have a document that reflects the community's vision as we grow. And I think the more that we can take the time now to incorporate that comment, update the draft, and have an updated draft for people to review, the better outcomes we're going to get down the road. This way, we can kind of hash it out together and avoid conflict at the City Commission or as future development comes our way. So I just want to thank you and say I think that it is, it is really smart for you to slow down and take your time and make these edits. Yeah, and I appreciate your time and all you're doing, and thank you to the previous commenters.
Thank you. I will just remind everybody, please put your mics on mute unless you're speaking. Next up, Michael DeChellis. If you would, please give your name, address, and make your comment.
Hey, guys. Yeah, it's Michael DeChellis. I'm at three fifteen West Butte, just over there on the lagoon. I'm also the Chair of the Conservation Board. We forward a comments to you that I'm not going to repeat here in the interest of time. I was, my comment really was related to process. I'm also on a city board, so I understand how frustrating some of this can be just because you have so much input to distill down. And I was just hoping that y'all would consider, I, I actually forwarded on to the board, but I just wanted to mention here in the public record, just a recommendation on a process that can both incorporate, hopefully incorporate feedback in like a smart way. You know, for example, you know, previous comments, you know, provide some pretty good input on what they're looking for, and I wanted to make sure that, you know, it's, it's, it's hard to condense that down into a, well, then what does that mean for the language of the growth policy? But there really needs to be a process that's in place that's actively doing that, or it's very hard to incorporate this. So I, I just, I was just hoping that y'all would spend some time identifying exactly what that process is during this meeting and communicating it to us, the public, and, and then actually looking forward. I think once, once we have a, a pretty clear expression of, of what we want in our growth policy and what that feedback looks like to edit the draft from Burton, I'd love to see y'all just spell out for, maybe for the Commission and for the other boards that are going to be implementing this, what does the prioritization process look like moving forward? So that we all, so that we all know what to expect and how to provide input on what we think is a priority and why. You know, and I, I don't, I don't know if that process actually needs to be part of before the growth policy, but I think it definitely needs to be well communicated so we all know what to do next. And, and frankly, I think if we all know what that, what that prioritization process is going to look like, then, then maybe perhaps some of the public comment that's being expressed here will, will find a better voice in, when trying to choose what to do next in terms of what, what the priority is going forward. I hope that was clear. So the first, the first request is, how do, how are you distilling all the comments down? And can you just spell that out? And then the second is, how are we going to prioritize after it's done? Thank you. Oh, and thank you so much. This, this is hard as a volunteer board to distill it all down. Y'all are doing awesome. Cheers.
Thank you. Next up, Jonathan Hettinger. If you would, please state your name and your address and make your comments.
Jonathan Hettinger, five nineteen West Park Street. I just wanted to make some comments on Chapter Five Housing. I just kind of wanted to, I, I might have said some of these at the first meeting, but I just kind of wanted to, I don't, I know I didn't say all of them, and I wanted to reiterate these points that I think I just was looking, I looked through it and I was thinking about a lot of this data that, and how the data helps drive the document. And when you're looking at like table five point three median home values and even the section above it that says median home values are even more expensive than this, I just kind of think something like that needs to change maybe because, or maybe needs to be taken out. Because I think that when you see two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars is the median home value in Livingston or a median rent of seven hundred and ninety-four dollars, that sounds like the distant past, even if it was two years ago or the running average of the past of two thousand fourteen to two thousand eighteen. I think even two hundred and seventy thousand dollars is the median home sales value, sounds like the past, even if that was January to June. So I just kind of think, this is similar to what I've said about the population estimates. I just think if we're going to have the numbers, we should make them as recent as possible. That way we can help the doc, help the document inform things and some. That way we can help the doc, help the document inform things and some, and I kind of think something like this, it doesn't necessarily matter what the median home value is. It matters more that community members reported in the update survey that housing isn't affordable. So I just kind of was thinking, taking out table 5.3 and then when we're talking about housing occupancy and 5.2 and kind of just the the sections around that. It doesn't really talk about vacancy as an issue, like how there is hardly any vacancy. Like the almost every single rental unit in the in Livingston is full at all times and it's really hard to find a place. So I thought we have this nice chart, but I think we should maybe add somewhere in the language, something about vacancy rates if we need to go into that. And then the other part that I wanted to talk about was the city has now said that they're going to fund the housing action planned through the Community Foundation. And I just want to make sure that gets included in here somewhere under goal one. Because right now it doesn't really say that. This is housing needs assessment. But I don't think, but I think that what they determined they were going to fund was a housing action plan. So maybe under strategy 1.4.1, make that a housing action plan or somewhere in there, I think that should be added. And then I know I said this one before, but strategy 1.2.2 talks about a task force. It doesn't ever really say where that task, it doesn't say anything about that task force and where that is developed or anything. So that's just kind of confusing. And it says 11.2.1, which I don't think is the right strategy number on that. But yeah, I just kind of wanted to say those things and then just maybe somewhere in goal one, mention rentals because it doesn't necessarily go into that really. It talks about affordable housing, but that's all. So thank you for your time and thank you for considering the public comments.
Thank you. Next up is somebody identified as Daniela's iPhone. If you could, please give your full name and address and make your comment, please.
Hi, yeah, it's Daniela Love. I'm at 705 Lockleaven Drive in Livingston. And I just wanted to thank you because that is something that needs to be acknowledged that there is a lot of work and a lot of time that is taken into this. And I don't want to repeat everybody, but I just want to echo my support on saying I second everybody that has spoken so far with taking time, really looking at all the ins and outs when it comes to our rivers, our downtown. And yeah, and just thank you and just a second on everybody that spoke and and yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I don't see any other hands raised. Again, if you have a question, I'm sorry, if you have a comment you would like to make, if you would in Zoom, go to the lower right hand corner, hit the three dots and raise your virtual hand to be recognized. If you are, oh, I've got a few folks there. Okay. Next up, Becca, I'll try to pronounce your last name, Frucht. If you would, please pronounce your name correctly and give your full address and make your comment, please.
Appreciate it. Hi, this is Becca Frucht. You did a pretty good job. 125 South Eighth in Livingston. And I also just like Daniela, one, want to say thank you for the time taken on this volunteer board on a super complicated matter that's extremely important to our community. And also echo Danielle and everyone else, I don't think I have anything super original to say here, except that I appreciate all the comments thus far. I want to throw my support behind it as a concerned citizen. Really appreciate the notion of going slow with this collaborative as possible, as much community input as possible. And, you know, being really thoughtful about, in particular downtown infill. So thank you all so much.
Thank you. Okay, again, just a reminder, if you have a comment that you would like to make, please raise your virtual hand. If you are only on a voice line, let me know and I'll acknowledge you via the voice.
I'm, I'm having trouble.
Okay. Okay, that's all right. So if you would, if you would state your name and address and make your comment, please.
Thank you. Yes. My name's Julie Kennedy. I live at 1428 Kennedy Lane here in Livingston. I filled out some comments on the the portal last night and called into Faith at the City Today just to verify that those made it and that they would be read by tonight's meeting. And she confirmed that that portal had not been downloaded for the last couple of days. So those comments hadn't been delivered to you and she suggested that I forward them by way of email to you. But I just want to go on the record that there are comments out there in the portal that haven't been uploaded and acknowledge probably. So it was also strongly recommended that I show up at the meeting tonight and state my, so. I I wear two hats here and with this comment. And the first I'm most important to me is going to be my, my home. My husband and I have acreage and we ranch in what I still call the donut area. And I apologize for my old wording. And I want to express how important it is to us that you do not put any restrictions on current agricultural practices, businesses and use in that donut area. We're on a place that's been, it's had cattle on it for over 100 years. And the city is growing up all around us and we just can foresee a conflict coming at some point, which is very sad because this homestead, you know, is a part of historical Livingston area. There's a lot of history here. With that, I want to also request that there not be any restrictions added or language that would grandfather, put grandfather restrictions on agricultural use in in that area. When that type of wording is put in any zoning, it limits a resale of the property. And if a person wanted to come in and continue egg use on that parcel, they would not be able to at that point. It would have to revert to whatever the zoning regulations are. We'd like to turn this over to the next generation in our family. And it's important that, that, that that we strive that that continue in our county, the rights to do that. The second hat that I wear in the community is a, I'm a real estate agent, a Realtor in the community and I have been for over 15 years. I've lived in the community for over 40 years and glad to help you guys with anything. You have questions on medium home prices, rentals or any of that kind of stuff, throw that out there. But I really want to express what I've seen over the years, what people are coming here for and what they appreciate for. They're not coming here to live in a city, to live in infill or live on lots that their neighbors are right next door. Quality of life for most people really is that little dream where they can have a garden, where they can have a place to put their drift boat, where they can have a garage, where they can get out of the wind, put their kids in car before going to school, that kind of thing. And I don't think that the infill vision allows that. I mean, I, I would love to have stopped Livingston's growth 20 years ago, put skirts on it, but it's just not realistic. We need to allow for this. We need to plan for this. And I feel the most logical place to do this is next to where the city infrastructure is already set up and continue on in that area. Having lived in the Fleishman Creek area for 30 years, I really feel that there's, you know, I hate to see it, but it's, it's prime area over there for some more development with lots that are quality lots that allow a lifestyle why people are moving to that area. Let's see here. Let me look at my notes because I really didn't plan on.
Ms. Kennedy, I'm going to have to ask you, basically time's up, so.
Thank you. All right. Yeah, please. Thank you.
I, I am going to address the one comment you made regarding your comments. I will let you know that that we did receive them from Faith and every, all the board members, they were emailed to them before the meeting. So we did get that. And also, we are looking into what happened with the most recent download from the portal. So we are, we are looking into that. So thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Yeah, there's several others. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Chris King. If you would, please state your name and full address and then make your comment, please.
Hey, everybody. Nice to spend the evening with you. I live at 425 West Chinook in Livingston, Montana. And I'm sorry, I am logging on late. This, I may be reiterating what was said earlier. I was out promoting shop, small and local this evening. So check out the Business Improvement District and the Convention Visitors Bureau's websites for more information about how you can all win gift cards for shopping local. But I just wanted to emphasize the importance of affordable housing for business growth in town. If there is not affordable housing, businesses can't hire staff. And in addition to the pandemic, that is what small businesses tell me the most is that their staff doesn't have anywhere they can live. And as you all probably know, we're dangerously close to being one of those communities that people have to live in another county and then commute to Livingston. So it may not be the ideal, you know, mini ranch with a garden, but if they can afford to live there and eventually save up money to buy property, that's wonderful. But in the meantime, we also have a working class that needs to have affordable housing. And there's so many fantastic historic buildings downtown that really give a fantastic quality of life. The light in some of the upper floors of downtown buildings is really superior to the 100 year old houses that I purchased. So I really want to encourage that and particularly really want to learn more about how that can be incentivized because if there's not an incentive to build more affordable housing, it will continue to be short term rentals and higher end condos for part time residents. So thank you very much for all your hard work and together we can do it.
Thank you. Okay, just as a reminder, for some folks we've let on recently, if you have a comment you'd like to make, please select the three dots in the lower right hand corner and raise your virtual hand. If you are a phone connected only, just please make yourself known to me and I will recognize you and we'll get to your comments. And so are there any other comments at this time? Okay, second call. Are there any other public comments at this time?
Yes, Patricia Graybo.
Go ahead, Patricia, if you would, please state your address and then make your comment.
Okay, Patricia Graybo, 204 East Calendar Street. Family in Livingston since 1885. I own the Graybo Building, a significant part of the Graybo Building. And we have been providing affordable housing for the last 20 years by renovating the Graybo Building. I've been president Downtown Building Owners Association for the last 13 years and I've been a city commissioner and attended most of the city commission meeting and many of the planning board meetings for the last 20 years. I'd like to make the comment, two comments, pretty emphatically. First of all, I believe that the community did a wonderful job of making comments and its concern about the environment and in my case, particularly the watershed. Our fifth graders know more than most adults planning on this. We are, we are at the end of the paradise, which is a, an animal migratory route for the last 6,000 years. We have birthing grounds for pronghorn on the voyage ridge. Our environment is unique. This is not anywhere USA. When we take a look at sprawl out on the east side of town, which 87 comments commented against. Appreciate the planning board taking this into consideration. It is, it is a travesty to even consider that, considering the environment. I, I'm an old environmentalist, been at this for a long time and feel that our community has stated very clearly and very strongly, we support considering the environment when we do our planning. Also infill development, I've been involved in planning for most of my life. Urban planning, did the comprehensive plan for Eagle River, Alaska and other places. And I find is there were fads that came along. But the most consistent thing that exists, and thank you, planning board, for making this a consideration, is the way we normally have planned cities in terms of long history of humanity. We had a very good, strong cities meeting today at noon. And I cannot emphasize enough the kind of consideration that has to go into planning Livingston. This is unique on the planet. We are the original entrance, the first national park in the world. And it would be a travesty should we not consider the environment in which we live, the water that flows through that environment as we plan for the future of Livingston, Montana. I've been involved in downtown Livingston and advocated for, I can't even tell you how many things I've advocated for over the years. But it is always to have this amazing city where we could actually be the most beautiful, remarkable, intelligent city in the state. And this planning board has that kind of power to really listen to what the people said during the growth policy process and and really consider what they had to say. Not the, the outrageous map that the city manager put into that growth policy document, but truly go back to what people had to say during this growth policy. And if it takes us another year, it takes us another two years. Please, let's, let's develop this at city to its potential. One other quick thing. Having had downtown, a downtown building, we have to plan for parking for residential people in the downtown. If we're going to develop the downtown, there's a man named Dan Burden, who's got the $8,500 proposal to develop our parking lots, plan for residential parking and provide bike paths.
Ms. Graybo, I'm sorry for the interruption, but four minutes, four minutes up.
Thank you so much for being such a remarkable planning board that you will listen to the public on this.
Thank you. Next up, please, Carrie Cale, if you would, state your name and address and make your comment, please.
Thank you so much. My name is Carrie Cale. I live at 702 East Lewis Street here in Livingston. And I just wanted to touch on, I know some other folks have touched on it this evening already, but to really think about and look and and consider infill in the city of Livingston. I think for a lot of younger community members, folks who are single, folks who are working class, living in town is really optimal. We really do need affordable housing and I feel like those are the places that we're going to find that. That allows people who don't have vehicles to walk to work, to walk to the grocery store and have a quality of life that they enjoy. I know a lot of us who have escaped Yellowstone National Park and retired to Livingston are those people that want to live in town and be able to walk and enjoy those things. I also think that you need to look at what that looks like for the city budget, how much less expensive it is to grow within the city limits where you already, where you already have the infrastructure, looking at growing further and further out and the infrastructure and the cost to the city is quite extraordinary. So I hope that you will keep considering the thought of infill. I think the maps, obviously we've talked, we've sort of beaten a dead horse, I feel like at this point, but the maps that are included in this planning document don't seem appropriate, nor do I feel like you listen to comments putting those maps in that document. So I hope that we will continue to look at this and have these conversations. And I will agree with Patricia, let's take our time and get this done properly. And it can be a document that all of us can be very proud of. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I see no other hands up. So again, first call for any additional comments. If you're having problems getting your virtual handoff, let me know. We'll take that verbally. Okay, this is second call for any additional public comments. And this is third and final call for any additional public comments. Okay, hearing nothing, that concludes the public comments sex, excuse me, section of this meeting. Uh, time is six twenty-six. Um, I will, at this time, let's go ahead and take a short break. Um, I hate to make things too wonky, but I want to make sure that we get back in time. So let's go for, I'm showing six twenty-six, so let's please be back in our six twenty-seven now. Let's please be back in our chairs at six thirty-two and we'll start promptly then. Thank you. Brian, do you want me to send you this spreadsheet? Oh, where'd he go? Okay, hi, everybody. I'm showing six thirty-two, so we will go ahead and resume the, um, the meeting. Um, let me just do a quick roll call, just to make sure all of the board members are back. Um, Scott Weisbeck. Stacy Jovic.
Here.
Shannon Holmes.
Present.
Jessie Wilcox.
Here.
Melissa Newt.
Here.
And I, of course, am your host, Brian Conklin. Uh, Jessie, um, you can hold on to the Excel spreadsheet. We won't be addressing any of those comments, uh, directly this evening. Um, when you uh, complete the minutes, you can just shoot those to me if you would, please. Okay, we have no, uh, old business, uh, new business on the agenda was the Growth Policy Board deliberations vote on growth policy recommendation to the commission. Um, as I stated in my opening comments, we did make a vote, uh, at the last meeting. That, um, we did vote at that time that we were going to rec- uh, um, uh, recommend to the commission that we, um, thought that, that, uh, more time was needed. Um, and edits, more edits were required to the document that was not ready for any more, uh, public hearings. Uh, due to some procedural issues, um, that vote later we determined was not valid. Specifically, what the procedural issues were is we did not advertise the, uh, gr- the vote, uh, at least ten days in advance. Uh, we had advertised the Friday before and the Monday or Tuesday before, I can't remember. Uh, the other thing is we did not have that as the agenda item. We, um, kind of diverted as we went through the meeting, so that wasn't, uh, a public notice. Uh, and finally, when we did the vote, because it was not on the agenda, um, I did not, uh, ask for public comment on that. So uh, we are going to lessons learned. Um, um, we did get this out ten days in advance. Thank you, Matthew, for getting that into the, uh, local paper. Um, we did post in the agenda that we would be making a vote today. Um, and we will follow process going forward so that we do have a, um, um, something ready to go. So my apologies to everyone for not following, uh, the process. Um, but, uh, I think it also gave us a little bit more time to think about what we were doing. Uh, one thing it did allow me to do is draft a memo, uh, and I, what I'd like to do is use this as a starting point. Um, and I'll read this memo off. I know so not everybody has, can visually see it. Um, for the board members, I'll, I'll read this memo off. Based on our discussions at the last meeting, I think this is sort of where we're at. Again, this is just a draft. This is, um, this is taking the inputs that I received and and, and the intent that I came away with. So this is just a starting point. What I'd like to do is read this. And then what we'll do is go, um, go around for everybody to make their comments on it or on this, or if we decide to go some other way as well. Um, but everybody will get a chance to make a comment. And then at some point, we will, we will make a motion this evening. So please bear with me. I'll redo this quickly. Uh, this map for the, uh, Livingston submission. Uh, and it states, "The planning board requests the city commission delay the deadline for a final growth policy recommendation as a January twenty-twenty-one city commission meeting agenda item." In addition, "The board requests the city commission have the city staff in Burton finish collecting information, gathering feedback, editing the document, and presenting the growth policy in a more complete and final form." Excuse me. "The three hundred and fifty-five-page growth policy was not delivered and available to the community and board until October twenty-first. Since delivery, the board has had three public hearings and it has become apparent to the board this document is not ready for per- excuse me, this document is not ready for further public hearings or a final recommendation at this time. While well-intentioned, it now appears the effort to aggressively accelerate the timeline for January city commission meeting left out some critical steps in the process. Specifically, the community did not have an opportunity to review and comment on any initial or complete drafts other than the very limited community profile that was provided in August. Therefore, the planning board finds itself now being asked to play three roles at this stage in the process. One, collect and record public comments and edits to the growth policy, um, which is a Burton responsibility. Two, translate and defend content and scope in group, included in the growth policy in its current state, a city staff and Burton responsibility. And final, and finally, three, evaluate and recommend, a planning board responsibility. Public and other city board input has been significant. Most of the comments at this stage pertain more to the first two roles described above. Since the planning board was not involved with the development of this document, we are, we were unable to adequately address or explain many of the findings, concepts, and conclusions made by the city staff in Burton. Most inputs received to date share a consistent theme of questionable data, lack of participation in the process, not being able to understand how certain concepts, recommendations, and conclusions were derived. The majority of concerns focused on the following and, on the following areas and are foundational to the conclusions drawn in the document. One, future growth map and future land use map. Two, the extraterritorial jurisdiction plan. Three, population estimates. Four, lack of sufficient emphasis on city infill and out, and downtown development. Five, general errors or inaccuracies. Is the board's judgment that in order to ensure the community and the city commission has a growth policy that they can confidently use as a guideline for future planning, budgeting, zoning, code development, et cetera, that more edits are needed? Therefore, it is requested the commission, sorry, let me page down here. Therefore, it is requested the commission take what can hopefully be a short strategic pause to help ensure the planning board receives a product it can accept in order to complete its role of evaluating and recommending. The planning board therefore requests the city commission have the city staff in Burton complete a final community review of the draft policy. This should entail collecting information, gathering community feedback in a public forum, editing the document, and presenting the growth policy in a more complete and final form. Once a final version can be accepted, it is requested that the city commission then allow the planning board to proceed with public hearings and development of a final recommendation on the growth policy to the city commission. Thank you for your consideration of these requests. So it stated that this time, um, I will, uh, call on each, uh, board member to see if you have a comment um, that you would like, uh, regarding this draft memo and/or the way ahead. Um, so I'm going to go ahead and start, uh, with Scott Weisbeck. Scott, do you have, uh, any comments you'd like to make?
No, Brian, I, I think this is to the point. Um, you can scroll up to the first page.
Sure. How far you need me, Scott?
What's up?
How, can, can you see that?
Now, it's, it finally caught up with you. Um, there, there was this statement where since the planning board was not involved in the development of the document, I would like to add at the request of the city manager.
Okay.
That, that wording.
Got it. Um, just for a point as well, do we want to say, "And the city commission"? Because that, this did go for a, uh, it did go to the city attorney, if you recall. Or do you just want to keep it at that?
Um, I, I think we, we as a board, when I chairman and, and we had staff members, we tried to dig in and, and have a more active role in the preparation of this document, and we were advised to stand down.
Okay. Yeah.
So, I want the, I want the public to understand that, that that was something that we tried to be more in the meat and potatoes in the preparation of this document. Because we didn't hire the consultant, that we didn't, uh, get that opportunity as a board.
Okay. Got that noted. Thank you, Scott. Uh, next, um, I'll go to, uh, Stacy Jovic. Stacy, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Do Brian, there's somebody in the waiting room, too. I'm sorry to interrupt.
I, I just let him in.
Um, uh, the comments that I have overall is, um, I just wanted to, to also think first, before I forget. Everybody from the public that has submitted information, um, I was impressed with the, the amount of detail that some people went into on their passions, and I certainly, um, really appreciate that, and I hope we don't lose any of those comments in the process. I think a sixth, uh, category that I would put on page one would be, um, I think I heard loud and clear that, uh, the readability of the document needs to have page numbering or, um, something to bridge the objectives at the end of the document with the, the main body of the document. And also that the priorities, um, the chart that they, in the way in which they presented it was perhaps not the best way to present it. For the pri- or priorities of the work that needs to be done. And, um, I think in here we should put in here some kind of timeframe. I mean, we just, you have it kind of open-ended as to what it would be. Um, I would like to see some kind of, like, within six months, back to Burton or less, something so that we have a handle on that.
Okay, um, what, what would be your recommended timeframe that you're thinking about here? Are you there, Stacy?
Yeah, I am. I'm thinking.
Okay, okay, sorry.
I don't know. I think maybe that could be up for some discussion with the board. Um, I guess I'd kind of like to hear other, the rest of the people's comments and then kind of come back to that. I don't want to just take a super long time. Um, so I guess I'd like to have feedback from everybody else and then.
Okay, just to make sure I got your, uh, sixth priority correct, too. So basically, improved readability, page numbering on the appendix, and just the layout in general. Is that correct?
Yes, plus the fact that the, um, the way that Burton has presented the priorities, it's in that, in the, at the end in the charts, and it, it doesn't give, uh, I don't know, a real sense of urgency, it just gives it, you know, kind of the first one or two years or whatever. And I would like to see, uh, maybe a, a summary of the top priorities.
Okay.
It, it listed as, it lists as, uh, immediate one to two years and three to five years, but it's, it's broken down into the different categories under each goal and objective.
Okay. Uh, anything else, Stacy?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next, uh, Shannon, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
I do, Brian. Uh, first of all, thanks for drafting this. Um, again, I'm just blown away by the amount of public comment. Um, Again, I've just blown away by the amount of public comment, um, during this whole process. So process question, uh, as we go around board members and, you know, I'm, I'm happy that we got through all the public comment, knowing we had close to forty participants on the meeting tonight. So, um, I've been looking forward for the planning board itself to have more conversation than what we've had the previous two meetings. Um, so just a process question are with suggestions, comments from board members on this document, are we going to ultimately vote on how it's, um, edited and the final version of that? And I guess the situation I'm talking about is I, I, I disagree with Scott's recommendation on input on the city manager. Um, I think ultimately the, based on my knowledge, the, the city commission has directed city staff to hire a consultant, um, to draft the growth policy. So just want to make sure that as we provide our comments, if, if we're ultimately going to vote on what, what the final document looks like before we send that to the commission. Um, on to comment specifically about this draft, um, if, if indeed are, uh, we approve as a board, sending this back to city staff in Burton and having them edit that, um, and, and get a new version. Does that mean we have zero role in that once that draft is resubmitted? Where you talk about, since the planning board was not involved in the development of the document, we were unable to adequately, adequately address or explain many of the findings, concepts and conclusions made by city staff in Burton. Again, I feel like it's our role, if, if we do not know the answer to something, it's our role to utilize city staff. And so, um, I would say that we have every right as a board to request further information from city staff. And if that entails further information from Burton, then that would be city staff's determination. I agree with the the following areas that are addressed. I think we all as a board agreed that the future growth map, future land use map, the extraterritorial jurisdiction, population estimates, lack of sufficient emphasis on city infill have all been comments from certainly people that have participated in these Zoom meetings, uh, over the last two, um, meetings we've held. Um, I think all of that really illustrates the evolution of our community. And if it's the board's decision or if it's ultimately the city commission's decision, we have to decide a cutoff line for information and, and updated information. I, I a hundred percent agree that it would be nice to have the most up-to-date information in, in this document, but knowing that it, it's a fourteen to eighteen month process. It's, it's going to be hard to make sure that when it's finally accepted by the city commission that it has the most recent information. Um, so we're, I think there, a decision needs to be made on where the cutoff for that is. And I understand COVID played a role in, in, uh, a lot of that information this year, but, um, we need to make a decision on where that cutoff is. Um. I personally am trying to analyze the public comment from the people that have been participating in these Zoom meetings, which I feel represent a small percentage of the overall constituents in and around Livingston. Uh, I have to be honest that I have not read every public comment from since inception of this project. But, um, I know there's been a lot overwhelming amount and I'm, I really need to analyze what, what I'm hearing primarily in four primary areas, um, where that weighs with, with all the comments as a whole. The other thing that I'm trying to evaluate is, is comments from county residents versus cit- city residents. Um, and I certainly want to spend some time, uh, looking everything over and, and making a decision myself on how a county residence comments compared to a city residence. Um, I would like to see our board, and I've mentioned this probably eight months ago. I really'd like to see our board focus some attention on the actual priorities that are addressed in this. I think that's where we have a lot of opportunity to be able to utilize of our financial resources, our staff resources to help implement this growth policy as quickly as possible. So I, I, I would encourage our board to at least dedicate some time on prioritizing the priorities that are addressed. And I know there's a lot, but I feel like that's going to be a, a, add a big value to our community, um, moving forward as we implement this. Those are all the comments I have at this time. Thanks.
Thanks, Shannon. Um, one I'll, one I'll answer right now about process and thanks for bringing that up. It's a good question. What I, what I think we'll do is so we'll use, again, we're using the memo as a foundation. This is again, based on sort of where we were last, last meeting. Any comments made additions, yes, we will have a discussion on, on each of those line items, uh, if you will. So yeah, that, I, I, I think we do need to talk through some of those things. For example, uh, Scott's comment, uh, talking more about timeframe and things like that. So we, we will, uh, that does not end the conversation. Next up, uh, we'll go with Jesse. Um, Jesse, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Yes, thank you. Um. Brian, I do have a few comments. Um. The, uh, first comment I wanted to make is adding to that list. I think another common theme that I'm hearing quite a bit, uh, from the public comment is preservation of natural resources. Um, I think, uh, that statement sort of addresses the concern about the Yelson National, uh, the, the Yelson River, riparian habitat, wildlife, uh, habitat and corridors, um, and, uh, open land. So I think we, I recommend we add that to the list. Um, I also, uh, recall at the beginning of the, the process, we as a board had discussed requesting an editable version of the growth policy. I don't think we ever got that. Um. And I guess I, I, I just wanted to state that I don't think we ever received that. And so I realized we are sending, you know, we, we had discussed sending this back to Burton and, uh, the city staff to have them work on this and revise this draft before it's up for public comment, uh, or, uh, public hearings. But I think having that editable draft from the beginning would have helped us, uh, move that process along if we could have inputted some of the comments that we had to that document. So I'll just kind of leave it at that. Um. I also think, um, that it, it should be recommended to the city and I don't know if we do this in this memo or do it at another time. But with the comment that Stacy made about the readability of this document, I, I did attend the, uh, the Strong Town meeting today. And one recommendation that I thought was really very useful was, uh, the recommendation was that there's a much shorter version. It was referred to as a citizen's guide to the growth plan, which was about either one to two to maybe five pages that really synthesized the priorities of the plan. And then you have this three hundred and fifty-five page document that is available for the, uh, for reference, but there is a smaller version that is much easier for the general, uh, you know, citizenry of, uh, the community to read. And I think that's something we could consider or recommend, um, when this, when this draft is done. Um. And then as far as process is concerned, um, I, I have to agree. Um, I think, uh, I guess I agree with, I can't remember who I'm agreeing with, but I agree that we, I, I understand that there is a need to get this done. But I like the idea of taking our time, um, and, uh, and working collaboratively with the community and or the advisory boards in getting this draft completed in a way that the community feels they have, their input has been accepted. And, and I, and I feel that very strongly with the advisory board's, uh, comments as well, because they put so much effort and thought into very specific changes and language that they wanted to see. And I think, uh, involving them in the process, i- if, if that works for those boards should be considered as well. And I think that's all I have for comment. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Jesse. Finally, then I'll go with, uh, Melissa. Would you like to make any comments on this?
Sure. Um, thanks, Brian. So. I'm just thinking about what everybody else has said and I'm agreeing with a lot of it, with the rest of the board has said. One thing that, one thing that is happening right now that is that housing action plan also that was brought up in public comment. It's a housing needs assessment and a housing action plan and the city already committed to putting money towards that. So I don't think that that's, uh, I don't know that that would take a lot of time to update that housing section to have it accurately refle- to excuse me, to have it accurately reflect some of the changes that have happened in the last six months or so. Um, I think we have about a dozen Realtors in Livingston who have offered to help gather data for us to get that, to get that flushed out and more accurate. So I would, um, I would say we should consider including that in the memo as well. Um. Cause that is something I've gotten a lot of feedback on. Um. Another thing concerning timelines, um, Shannon brought up a good point that, um, you know, he hasn't even had time to go through all the comments yet. And it occurs to me that we might not have all had a chance to go to the, through the comments yet. If we're including all the ones that are being submitted, submitted to Burton, which we haven't received. So I wonder in terms of timeline, if we might consider that end, end date for the comments submitted online to the Burton portal. And then presumably that would be the bulk of comments before we have some, and then, and then give us the planning board some time to actually read those all between meetings. And then when we have our final public hearing where we're voting on a resolution or an ordinance, obviously people always can comment before a vote, but maybe then we'd have more time to work through those as board members. That's just one option, I think, Brian. Um. Regarding the topic that Scott and Shannon were bringing up about who directed what. So it is true that the commission voted on a contract that the city manager would oversee. And it's also true that Scott was the chair of the board at that time. I don't, I don't know that, I think about half the board members. Brian, you and I were on the board then with Scott. I don't know if anybody else was, but I think Brian or Scott as the chair was working on, and he can correct me if I'm wrong. He was looking at the scope of work for Burton. And he was working to make sure that the, cause that's, I think that's what Scott was following to make sure that the planning board was being involved on the steps that were outlined in the scope of work. And I believe that that's what Scott was referencing. So I think both statements are true. As far as I can remember, but I would defer to Scott since he was in those meetings, not me. I'm just remembering what he relayed to us, the board. Um. So I'll let you follow up with that, Brian. The last thing I was thinking was something that Shannon brought up was will the draft come back to us? Um. If we send it to the commission, will we ever see it again? And so there is this. I'm reminded that there is a motion and I'm just going to read it to you all because that's easier. There's a motion to postpone consideration. So I think potentially one option for us as a board would be a motion to postpone consideration, voting on the resolution until after the memo to the commission, until after we send the memo to the commission and the drafter turns back to us at the planning board where we can make our recommendation at a future public hearing. And I'm going to read the motion to you. This is in our city ordinances in our city code. So a motion to postpone consideration. This motion, if passed, requires discussion of the agenda item to be halted and the agenda item to be placed on hold. The motion can contain a specific time in which the item can come back to the body. This is a quote. So an example, quote, I move, we postpone consideration of this item until our regular meeting in October, end quote. Or the motion can contain no specific time for the return of the item, in which case a motion to consider the item and bring it back to the body will have to be taken at a, excuse me, will have to be taken at a future meeting. A motion to postpone consideration and item or to bring it back to the body requires a simple majority vote. So I just wanted to lay that out as one potential option, getting to Shannon's um, concern, which is valid. I would like it for us, I would like for us to be able to see it again before we make a formal recommendation on the final product. And that is all that I have. Chair, Uncle I yield.
Thank you. Let's go through a few of these things, um, one at a time. We'll discuss them to fruition. Um. First of all, one thing I do want to be cognizant of is I don't want to, my preference would be not to bog down this, this memo, we could start turning it into, it could get really detailed really quick and we could lose the point that we're trying to make. Uh, I think that, again, the point that we're basically trying to make at this time is we do not think this product is ready for, um, the planning board's recommendation to go forward. So I want to make sure we don't lose track of that by adding too much. Um, you know, some of the things we're talking about like prioritizations and things like that. I think, or us doing priority work, I think is a little premature. I mean, we have to have the document complete first. So I do want to point that out and I do want to ask us to try to refrain from taking away from the basic message, because I think the basic message we want to get in front of the commission. Again, this is based on what I've heard from you all so far. Is that, look, we think we need a strategic pause. We think we need more involvement. We think we need another look at this. So I'm going to try to recommend that we not put too much more in this, but we add whatever it is that's really critical that we need. So one thing that I'd like to go through and, and, and talk about is because there is, uh, deferring opinions on it is specifically the comment that Scott made, um, that, uh, in this section right here says, um, bear with me a sec, sorry. Down here, since the planning board was not involved with the development of the document, at the request of the city manager. Um, as, as Melissa pointed out, Scott was the chair at the time, so he was closest to this. So, um, you know, I, so I trust that was his perception and, um, because he was there and he was the one dealing with this and being the chair, I know what it's like. So, so I empathize. However, I, I think it wasn't just the, the city. I do think, you know, that collectively as was stated, you know, um, it was the commission that basically tasked the city to do this, the city to get the, to get the, um, contract. Now, based on my reading of the contract, should the planning board been more involved? That's my interpretation as well. But the, the one thing that I want to try to avoid with this message though, is trying to make it too personal, I'll admit. But the, the one thing that I want to try to avoid with this message, though, is trying to make it too personal, I'll admit as well. I mean, by throwing that, by putting that in there, it is a dig. It may be a valid dig, but, but what are we tending, intending to achieve by potentially staying, stating that? Scott, you said you wanted for the public record, and so it is on the public rec- record forevermore. But, and I'll come back to you, Scott, how adamant are you about us putting that statement in this memo? Again, cause you were the chair, I'm, I'm, I definitely empathize with your position, cause you were closer to it than any of us, so let me ask you that question.
Cause I'll preface this with. Early on, when it was determined that, so the previous growth policy was prepared by city volunteers. And so. It was very clear that we were hiring professionals to do this job. And we needed to let them do their job. And not muddy the waters, so that when the product came, it wasn't gonna be back to, you know, we. We, we, we poor boyed this, we wanted to hire cities, we wanted to keep volunteers out of that realm. And we want to hire professionals, let the professional do their work. However, that's construed, whoever made those calls. It was, we weren't involved with that. And so I said, well, as, as a chair, when are we gonna get the opportunity to review the document as is? And I was told when it comes out to draft. So we, we received this draft proposal at the same time that the public received this draft. Even prior to the draft coming out, and so I want the perception, or the, or the lack, lack of perception. That this board wasn't involved with preparing this document. That's, that's my, is this board wasn't involved with preparing this document as is. We had zero input in it, in it.
So. Yeah, and I think, sorry, go ahead.
So however that, that was construed or conveyed. We were, we were told not to be involved into it until. This point in the game.
Sure, I agree, and I remember it going to the city attorney and everything else as far as the involvement, so. I, I do think we make the point that we were not involved in, in a couple of locations. One is just by saying we were not involved in, in this, in this statement. And I think we have it in another area that said, again, we just didn't have the, we didn't have the. We didn't have the background for some of the concepts and recommendations, so. Is anybody else? Have an opinion on this statement on whether it should come in or whether it should go? And at the end, we're gonna vote on this entire, again, assuming this is the way we're gonna proceed, we're gonna vote on this, this memo in total. But as we go through, I, I want to try to just, in these sticking points, I want to make sure that we give everybody an opportunity to get their voice heard. Does anybody have an opinion one way or the other, either for or against this at the request of the city manager?
Brian, this is Jesse.
Yeah, Jesse.
You could reword that sentence, a- and you could say since the planning board was directed. Not to be involved with the development of the document. I mean, you could just, you know, kind of change the language, maybe a little bit of that sentence. So it's not necessarily pointing a finger, but, but, but letting, but just reiterating that we are directed not to be involved. Might, you know, take care of that possibly. You know, or, you know. At the direction, you know, since.
Yeah, I, I, and again, sort of what I'm trying to do here is, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't want this to be a, a planning board against. Again, I, I, we're asking, we're asking. What we're asking is to be involved in the process, and what I'm, what I'm hoping some of this, that may result to this, but again, the city doesn't have to come back to us to participate in this. They can still go do this in a vacuum, and that's fully within their right and, and based on what the city commission has enabled before, so. I don't, I don't necessarily want to throw stones either on, on what's happened. I don't want to over. I don't want to over dwell in it, I guess is my point. I don't, I don't think, I don't think there's a lot of reason for it. I think we've made the point that we were not involved. I'm not sure we need to mention specifics about who, why, or when. I'm leaning against it, is my personal opinion. Granted, I empathize with you totally, Scott, cause you were there, and I know the frustration that you had, but. I'm just kind of leaning against it. Are there any other opinions on this? And, and I'd rather not change the, my, I'd rather not water down the language, though, try to. Saying we weren't, we weren't directed to. I think, I think by saying it, I mean, this is the fact, we were not involved. I don't think we need to be any more specific than that. Does anybody ever else have any comments in this regard?
Brian, I have.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I guess when I'm thinking about the memo, and I'm thinking about our recommendation right now, I'm asking myself, what is the most important thing to us? As a board? And I think, I can't speak for anybody else, but the thing for me, the most important thing to me as a board member and as a commissioner, is I want a document. I want us to have a document that we feel confident in and that the public supports. That the public has felt heard, that we have a document that we feel is, reflects our community and the input that they've given. So I appreciate you saying, let's distill it down and keep it to the point, and I think for me, that's the main point. So if I would. Change anything about this document, I guess I would really want to emphasize to the planning board that, or I'm sorry, to the city commission. That we want whatever the things we agree on, the main themes. We want these main themes to be flushed out a bit more, and then we want to see it again, so we can have. A final public hearing and vote on a resolution or an ordinance as required by the Montana code.
And, and I would argue the memo has that, especially at the end, and, and especially if we, and we will get to. The, uh, motion to postpone, which I, I agree that is the strategy to hopefully ensure that we, that it does come back to us. Shannon, I think your hand's up. Go, go ahead, Shannon.
Thank you, Brian, appreciate it. Just, I, I want to throw out a consideration. I, I think. The meat and potatoes of this document is spot on, but. I, I'm just curious if anyone else on the board has thought about this from a different perspective, like. Should our premise be just asking the city commission to postpone acceptance of this? And what I'm hearing is our board is fully committed to participating and getting this to a point that. Is mutually agreeable to all parties involved, all resident city residents, county residents. If we ask the commission to postpone this. And we as a board commit to the things that are addressed in, in this memo. I guess, do we feel like we have the time and energy to address this and actually send that back? As a report to the city commission to have Burton address and.
I don't think that's what we're asking here, Shannon.
But. I know it's not what we're asking. I'm asking, is anybody considered that, that we still be involved, we, we still be involved with. We as a board address the five or six issues that you're talking about, and we. Draft a formal response from the planning board to address these specific items. And, and, and have it, and have these changes addressed. As dictated by our board.
Again, I'm gonna go back, I'm sorry, go ahead, finish your thought.
Again, this is, you know, this is a large document, and, and yes, these are five or six very important things. Be analyzed to, to get it to. A draft that, that is gonna be mutually accepted by all. But can't we play a role in, in getting, in getting it to that point, instead of just handing it back to city staff in Burton?
Could, 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 could we close?
Could we close our, I mean, we, we'd still have public comment, but if we dedicated a couple of meetings. To digging into these five items, do we not feel confident that we could? Get these addressed in a manner that's mutually agreeable by all the board members?
I, I adamantly disagree with that. Again, mostly to these three main points here of the three roles that we're being asked to play in the process. A lot of what we're collecting now are. Public comments and basic edits, which.
And Brian, you're, you're one person on, on, on the board.
I know, I know.
You giving me your comments, but, but I, I, I guess I'd like for our board.
Scott, well, we're still gonna, we're still gonna go around. We're not done, Scott. We're not done. I'm, I'm making my point, though. Why I adamantly disagree with it, because it is my turn. And we're going now through each of these, so. I go back to those three main points is, a lot of the edits and comments that we're getting. And we're getting pages and pages are really a Burton responsibility. It is incredibly difficult, because now that we do this in a public forum, you're hearing how much difficulty is to determine whether we should put in. A statement of, at the request of a city manager, if we're trying to go through each of these individual, we're at the hundreds level now of statements. In a public forum, in this format, it'll take years. So I, I argue that we're doing Burton's role that they should have done. Second, I, as we have found, I don't feel comfortable trying to translate and defend. The content and the scope included in the growth policy. Sure, I understand that we can go back to the. City staff for expertise and for clarification. But why should we? We, we don't have the benefit of one year's worth of context. We haven't looked at all of the other. Statements to date, so, um. So no, I, I adamantly disagree, disagree with that, but again, I'm one person, you're right, so. I'll, well, let's come back to that. I'm going through my laundry list of stuff here. So I'm gonna recommend that we don't include the statement about at the behest of the city manager, at the request of the city manager. I don't think that. I think, again, going to Melissa's comment, my prior comment, I think we try to keep this as streamlined as possible, if that is our intent. The second statement I wanted to do is add the, add the two recommendations to see if anybody had any problems with either of those. One was readability. Which was page numbering. And layout. Of. Way out in general. And the other one was. More. Emphasis. On. Natural resources. Resources, and I'm gonna say, I think it was a, a special, a yellow stone. Does anybody have any issue? And I'll, I'll clean those up a little bit, make, I'm just, those are notes to self. Does anybody have any concerns with adding those two? Areas of focus? Yeah, go ahead.
I think Melissa added update housing data. I don't know if that would be included in. Like the population estimates or, or whatever, if you want to put it together with that, but.
I, I wouldn't say that was an overarching theme. We can probably get that added later. I mean, again, it's. These were the, that was one thing that was brought up. I mean, it's up to you, Melissa, if you want to add that, I'm, I'm happy to add it, if you could repeat it.
Um, I've just, one of those things that I've been hearing a lot at different public venues from citizens in Livingston, Brian, is how out of date. All the housing data in writing is, because things have drastically changed. And people have the data, but the data is not being incorporated, so. So I might be mixing up meetings. It might have been other public meetings that I've been hearing a lot of information about housing, not just tonight. But what I said to repeat was just updating, updating the housing section with new data and including the housing assessment and action plan.
And, and I.
Just man, please.
I mean, I do think the point is.
Second, please, just a sec, please. What was that, updating housing section with new data, and what was that, Melissa?
It's the housing assessment and action plan.
And I'm sorry, was, did you say fix or?
It's just updating it. The city staff will know, because it's something that the commission voted on, so the city staff will know, cause somebody's probably written a check by now.
Okay, and it was that, I'm sorry, what was the name of that, updating the housing?
It's the, it's like the housing needs assessment and housing action plan.
Okay. Okay, Stacy, do you have a comment on one of these?
I was just gonna say that, that. The point is well taken that. This document will be in some places out of date by the time it gets finished, and that is a point well taken. And we, we all recognize that this is just an area that has changed significantly in our area, so I think that it's important, if we can, to. Update it while we can.
Yeah, I, I mean, I agree, it's a snapshot in times. It's always gonna, it's, it's never gonna be 100% right. Uh, and I think everybody's in, I think that's common agreement, and that's one of those things that I think I'm gonna say, I don't think we need to emphasize in this memo, because I don't want to lose the emphasis of the memo. There were a couple of comments made about, you know, maybe prioritizing, doing some prioritizing or recommendations as far as what we should hit. I agree, I too have adamantly said that once this growth policy gets approved. Then I would hope that the city commission that gets all of the feedback from the community then goes and. Prioritizes a lot of this for all of the boards and all of the city and says, hey, here's our chunks. I would just argue at this point, it's too premature to start talking about prioritizations. One thing that I would like to talk about is. Timeframes or deadlines. When I put the initial, initial memo together, I didn't. I didn't really want to put a timeline or, or put the city commission in a corner, quite frankly, of saying, well, you know. Cause I don't, not sure we have much to base it on. We can all say, well, you know, Bozeman, they took two years for their growth policies, so does that mean we should take two years for ours? Uh, or, hey, there may be contract issues at play here that we don't know about. That we may only be able to get them for a month. I, I don't know what the right answer is. I'm not sure we could come to that. So quite frankly, I'm, I'm preferring not to put a deadline on the commission to say. You know, we recommend you get this done in the next 30, 60, 90 days. What, what I'm hoping is gonna happen. Is this memo will basically start that dialogue with the city to say, okay, city, based on your current contract. Based on what you've seen as far as statements, what is reasonable? And that kind of starts that dialogue. I, I don't know what's reasonable within the context of, also, you know, city staff's gonna be involved to an extent. I don't know what's reasonable, so I don't, I don't really want to. Dictate, and I'm not sure it's our place, quite frankly, to try to dictate that. But I'll open that up. If anybody has a specific deadline they'd like to put on. I'm, I'm happy to consider it as a group. Does anybody want to? Talk about a specific deadline that they have in mind or think that is really required?
Can I speak to something you said, Chair Conko?
Go ahead, Melissa.
I'm, I'm apprehensive about timelines as well. I'm, I'm apprehensive about timelines as well. I, I think of other contracts, right? For example, like if I, if we were talking about a contract for some sewer line, the, um, it's unlikely that the commission would be demanding a certain pipe is replaced by a certain date, because there's a whole bunch of factors that that we have no control over, certainly as a commission. And so when I think the planning board is sort of one removed from that, I, I'm concerned that's a little bit too like micromanaging of city staff time when there's a whole bunch of other competing priorities that are being worked on. So I, I guess I'd rather it be done well than it be done quickly. Um, so I don't want to dictate too much of the time. If that makes sense.
It, it does. It does. Does anybody else have any comments on that?
I have a question.
Sure.
So Melissa, um, hypothetically, if we say this goes to the commission, this memo and whatever form it gets done, and it's read at the next meeting, I'm assuming, um, what procedurally would you see happening to it? I mean, how long or what, what kind of process do you see happening with this document?
I would, I would also would want to include Matthew in this conversation, but typically when things go back to, when anything goes to the commission from a board, typically what happens is, um, there's often the chair comes and they share, they've shared what the board voted on and give a little summary. The city staff, whether it's the city manager or department head, um, they often give feedback and answer questions. And so there's usually a board recommendation, and then there's also often a sta- accompanying staff recommendation. So I would imagine that it could be similar to every other contract or board recommendation that's come to us. And I would, I would like to hear Matthew's feedback as well on that, um, if that's how he would imagine it. But that's kind of what I'm thinking, Stacy, or what I would expect.
Yeah, Matthew, would you be willing to weigh in on that, your thoughts?
Yeah, um, so if you all do make a recommendation tonight, uh, which would trigger the state statute requirement that it moves on to the city commission, uh, the city commission would basically treat it as another item and would have to follow their state statute procedure, which would be, uh, the standard process of submitting the, the board recommendations, the board memos, staff recommendations, staff memos, uh, and then letting the commission make decisions on, uh, how they would like to proceed. Uh, this is a little bit different because of the growth policy, so there may be, um, the commission may decide that they want to do a longer process, process than a normal item, but uh, once that recommendation is made from the planning board, it's up to the commission to determine what they would like to do. Uh, they're pretty limited by state statute as well, um, on what their final decision can be.
Well, thank you. I, I think, though, based on, and we'll get to this here in a minute, um, I think if we do a motion to postpone, um, basically this hearing, we send this memo, and I specifically did not put the word recommend anywhere in this menu, memo. I just were, use the word request, that we get this to the city commission because we didn't want to lock ourselves out of the process. We still want to make sure that this policy comes back to us. And also, we don't necessarily want to, I think, lock the city commission into the process either. So I'm thinking that we can use that procedural technique to, um, to, as I said here, give us a strategic pause.
Brian, if I may-
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, if you do recommend to basically extend this item, you would not be taking-
Not recommend.
Well, if, so basically, if, if you were to request more time, um, and use that technique and use that motion, there would be no vote tonight, and you would not be able to submit this memo to the city commission, because you wouldn't be able to vote on it. You're not, basically, when you make that motion, you're saying, we're not gonna vote on this item. We're gonna vote on it at a later date. So the memo would basically be tabled. Um, you, if you are going to make a request for more time, you can make that in a motion. You need to be very clear that you are only making a request for more time from the city commission, that you are not making any sort of recommendation uh, on the growth policy, and that needs to be very clear in the motion that you make. Um, and the city, in that case, the city commission will have to treat it as sort of a discussion item rather than, than an item that will take a vote, and they'll have to discuss how they want to proceed with that, uh, request that the planning board has made. All right, it will be helpful to the city commission if you can be somewhat, uh, specific in what you are requesting.
So just as a, um, point of order, I guess, then. So if we, at this stage, work on this memo, which is a request for, um, basically so that we don't have, again, we were asked to get this done by January, so we're asking for two things, we're requesting two things in this memo essentially. One is that we don't have this due in January, and two, that the city commission have the city staff and Burton complete a final community review of the draft policy. So could we approve to have this memo agreed upon to provide to the city commission this evening as one motion? And then have a motion to um, postpone after we've already agreed essentially to proceed with this request, which isn't a recommendation. So we will do this, have our motion on this. Well, we will do a community input to make sure at that point that we do have community input on this specific request. Do you think that is um, viable? Matthew?
It's a tough question. Um, certainly, the motion to continue the item is probably the best course of action if you want to see this again, uh, just as it was noticed and is on the agenda as a planning board recommendation. Um, as that is the language you all used in the last meeting was to, uh, recommend to send it back to Burton. Um, so if you do not want this to be considered as your, um, recommendation, uh, I would say that, excuse me, continuing this item is probably the best thing to do. Um, it wasn't noticed, and there's no agenda item for you to make a request, uh, so you're getting into murky ground with that. Um, it may be better in that case for you not to vote on the memo. Um, this whole meeting has been public, so the city commission is aware of what you're saying here. Um, they're also aware that there's no consensus, and this isn't coming directly from the planning board. Um, but it may be worthwhile at the next meeting, forming a, an official request, um, from the planning board, rather than, uh, a recommendation, as the way it was worded at the last meeting.
A question?
Go ahead.
What does it gain us to do a motion to continue? If, if we, if we are saying that we ourselves do not have the, uh, basis to make the changes to the growth policy to then send it on, what, what does it gain us to have a motion to continue?
I think- Go ahead, Matthew.
Um, so there's state statutory requirements that once you make a recommendation to the city commission, uh, that triggers their process, and they have a very limited amount of options to take once that process has begun, which is basically to accept, accept with changes or deny the growth policy. Um, so in that case, yeah, you may never have a review of the growth policy again. Um, so you're basically making your official recommendation by doing that. By continuing it, you're not making that recommendation, and you allow this process to continue. Um, so that's sort of the trade-off. If you think that it's not ready and it should go to the city commission, um, and that's the recommendation, and you're comfortable with that, then a vote tonight would be uh, preferable if you would like more review time than continuing the item gives you that, uh, additional review time.
So basically what we were trying to do there, Stacy, is, um, at least with the suggestion that Melissa made, was trying, by trying to postpone, not force the issue, but it sounds like we may not be able to do that. Um, um, Shannon, I see your hands up. Do, do you want to make a comment on that?
No, Brian, I, I'd like to make a motion to continue the discussion on this draft memo to the commission.
Well, I think we're to stalemate because it's, it's, I think we need to figure out the process because if we're gonna be a request versus recommend, yep, go ahead.
If I may, Shannon's made a motion. Uh, we need to entertain a second on that motion. If that motion doesn't receive a second, then, uh, we will not move forward.
Thank you. You're right. Thank you. He did, he did make a motion. Thank you.
Vote on anything before public comment. We've not had public comment on this agenda item. Sorry.
Correct. We can have public comment after the motion, if you all would like to do it that way, uh, just in case the motion doesn't receive a second. Um, but we do need to take public comment on any motion that, uh, occurs. Uh, Commissioner Noots is a hundred percent correct.
Uh, just a point of order then. So if, if we have, I thought we only had to do public comment if we had a seconded, or is that wrong?
No, you can take a, a second and then do public comment. We just need to have public comment somewhere in the process before a vote has occurred. Um, based on the bylaws, technically, uh, the motion should come first.
Okay, so we have a, a motion to uh, stop discussion essentially on process going forward and get back to the memo from, um, Shannon, do we have a, is there a second? Okay, hearing, hearing none. Uh, we'll go back to the discussion about kind of end state process here. So Matthew, if I'm understanding you correctly, we sort of have one of two options. We could either, A, tonight, take this memo, make it a recommendation under the MCA. So basically, we're making that option three. We're not approving, we're not disapproving, but we are recommending some other alternative. Or B, we could, um, not vote on this, treat it this as a request, not vote on it this evening, instead then add a um, agenda topic at the next meeting as a vote to approve this draft memo and request. Um, however, I guess then, um, I'm s- I'm sorry, I just don't understand this all procedurally. I'm just trying to work through this so we can figure out the best way ahead. Here, here's the end state we want. We want to tell the city commission, these are the things that we would like, but also we would like to try to hopefully get some assurances that it's gonna come back to us someday. And so that's what I'm trying to get to an end state of. So those seem to be my, the only way forward, but maybe even the second way that I just mentioned is maybe not possible. If we make this a, um, memo, or a, a, a request to the city commission, add this as an agenda topic, and we basically just kind of rubber stamp it at the next meeting, just to get through the process, we can do that. But then, where are we in the public hearing? I mean, are we, do we just stay open with the public hearing, or at that point, do we vote to postpone? Um, so I need, I guess, some guidance on, on procedure there to make sure that we get that right. Does that make sense? Yeah, go ahead, Melissa.
Can we pull up the agenda one more time? I want to see exactly what's on the agenda that we're voting on. Can we just-
Sure.
All making sure we're looking at the same-
Yep, so it said, new, new business, growth policy, board deliberations slash vote on growth policy recommendation to commission. So it does say recommendation.
Need to make it bigger, man.
And that's the way it was in the, mentioned in the public, uh, notice, so.
So-
So we could say we're not gonna, I mean, just because we intended to vote doesn't mean we have to vote. We could say we're not voting tonight.
What I don't understand is why we can't just make a request for more, like what Matthew was saying, make a motion to continue, like a request for more time, and add the memo as a discussion item for the city commission meeting. I don't know why that couldn't all just be in one motion, like make the motion to continue. Um,
Okay.
And add the memo as a discussion, with the request for the memo to be a discussion item for the city commission. Like, just as one fell swoop, I'm just trying to think how we move things forward at the commission, and sometimes we, you know, we make a motion and include, whether it's like an edit or whatever. The other thing that we haven't talked about, a possibility-
Can we stop on that point really quick, Melissa? And maybe, I, I guess I'm not sure I understand the motion to continue. So what does that, what does that mean? I mean,
That, my understanding, and I'm gonna put it into my own words based on listening to Matthew, and Matthew, you can tell me if I'm right or wrong. Um, what I heard from Matthew was, making a motion to continue is saying, we're not voting on this. We're gonna put this on a future agenda where we're gonna vote on it later. And then what I say is I-
I'm sorry, can I ask real quick clarifications? So we're gonna vote on the, um, on the recommendation letter later, or on this memo later?
The recommendation later.
Okay.
My idea for a motion, based on how we've made motions at city commission meetings, and I'll let Matthew correct me if I'm wrong, but we do this pretty regularly, is I would have thought we could say, for example, I'm not making a motion right now, I'm just giving you an example motion. Like, I could say, I want to make a motion to continue this agenda item and send our memo to the city commission to take up as a discussion item on their next agenda. And so all of that, so it would really be a continuation, and we're telling the city commission specifically why we want to continue, or continue being, put this topic on a future agenda where we'll actually vote on it later.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you. Yeah, I get it.
That's one option, I think. Matthew-
Let's stick with, let's stick with that option. I think we've, I think we've beat this horse. I think we can do what we need to do with that. So you had another comment, Melissa?
Well, can we do that option? Is that, that's what I was gonna ask. I think we should be able to, based on, but-
So you're asking Matt, go ahead, sorry.
Uh, yeah, it's, it's difficult. Um, I'm struggling with the continuance and also voting to send a memo that has significant amounts of requests to the city commission in it that are included in that memo. Um, if you look at the last paragraph on the screen right now, um, you know, there's a list of requests for the, for the city commission to discuss. Um, the cleanest thing to do maybe to make a motion to request more time from the city commission, um, and not make a recommendation today, and then vote on, I'm trying to figure out how this works with the way it's been noticed, because we've only noticed it for one item essentially, which is this recommendation, um, which is not sounding like the direction you all want to go in. Um, it doesn't sound like you all want to make a recommendation, so honestly, the cleanest thing that you could do would be to, if you do not want to make a recommendation at this time, vote the motion to recommend down, um, and then at the next meeting, take a vote to request, make a request to the city commission with the memo. Um, because it has been a, noticed and as an agenda item for a recommendation, I don't think we can change that on the fly. Um, and adding additional motions becomes murky when you're voting on things that aren't called out on the agenda. Um, I'm not sure how much that helps or answers your question, um, but you sort of, it's, it's a very difficult question, uh, and I'm not an attorney, and I- Uh, but you sort of, it's, it's a very difficult question, uh, and I'm not an attorney and I don't want to give you legal advice that's going to get anyone into trouble.
Yeah, one comment too, um, don't forget we have two, two, potentially two members that are going to come off the board here in the next. Uh, well, really at the end of the month, um, one of the agenda topics that I'm going to add kind of that was the other that has come up since is, is we do need to do some interviews. So we kind of lock ourselves in. I mean, we've got to, I don't want to try to redo all this with a new board is what I'm trying to say because essentially we're, you know, starting in January and those people potentially we may have two people that have no, haven't, haven't had this history. So, um, probably the cleanest thing to do today, let's talk the, let's talk the pros and cons of it. Is do all of this as a recommendation. Um, the pros are we get it in, we let the city know, or we let the commission know what it is that we feel needs to be done. Um, and we are asking specifically that it does come back to us. Um, so the, that, that's the pro. The con is the city commission may look at this and say, uh, planning board, we disagree with you. We're going to go a different way and this doesn't come back to us. Again, I don't necessarily like trying to, I don't, this, I don't like putting the city commission in the, in a corner. We, we work for the city commission. So, um, we could, we could do that and that would be clean and easy instead of trying to maneuver around this, which I agree with Matthew. I'm not sure any of us feel comfortable enough, but they, with, with, I sure don't, with my Roberts rules and protocol to be able to tell you exactly how this should proceed. And I don't want to get any of us in trouble and I don't want this to happen, you know, like what happened at the last meeting. So what is, let me throw that out there. So what are your all thoughts about throwing this forward as a recommendation based on the planning boards? Based on our public hearing, like we said was in the agenda. Um.
Point of order, Brian?
Go ahead, Scott.
Well, I, I think what's the risk of, of putting this up there as is or some form of what it is right now? The risk is it ever comes back. The amount of public participation that we've had to this point. I, I don't, I'm projecting this. I don't see that happening. Um, it, it could very well, but I, I don't foresee that happening. Um, I, and I would agree with you on the bandwidth to try to digest the volume of materials that have come to try to do this as a board with the mountain of comments that we've gotten over the last three meetings. So you, you're kind of faced with putting this, one option is to put this forward in some variation of what it is. But the other option is to continue and know you're going to have to go through that mountain of paperwork and come up with a recommendation and just request a continuance. I mean, I tried to distill it down to two simple options. And option one is present in some form of what you currently have here on the screen. Add, delete, change, modify, or continue and know that yours as a board will have it. But we'll have a mountain of paperwork to go through. But that's kind of the, those are the two knowns, right? Those are the two certainties. I'll say that way. Those are the two certainties. If, if we go to the recommendation, it may not come back.
Right. I, I think I tend to agree with you based on public input. I, I, I would be willing to wager that it's come back, but again, there's no, there's no betting. So, um, I, I, I want to, so I want to throw that out there. What is, what are your thoughts then as a board of going forth with the recommendation? Based on what we said we were going to do with the agenda item? Based on the Montana code annotated, um, Scott heard you. Stacy, what are your thoughts?
Well, I was just wondering, um, this is in regard to a comment that Matthew made earlier that we were requesting the city commission to, um, your last paragraph, the planning board therefore requests the city commission, that whole paragraph detailing what, um, I guess I'm, I'm wondering if we distilled that down to, we would really like to see the, the draft policy come back to us as a neutral sentence instead of listing the specific things out. I'm still confused.
I do have that, I do have that at the last sentence there. Just sorry to cut you off, but it does says, once a final version can be accepted, it's requested the city commission, then allow the planning board to proceed with public hearings.
Okay. Um.
So would you be leaning toward, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going to speed up, speed us along a little bit. So would you recommend we do go toward recommendation or not?
I'm just still kind of confused as to what giving you the, gi- giving a continuance does for us. So I haven't heard anybody really explain to me what getting more time will give us.
Hey, Brian, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, um, I think if you were to make a request for more time, um, first of all, I just want to say that, um, you know, the city commission has requested that you get it done by a certain time. You're, you're certainly not beholden to that timeframe. Um, you have as much time as you think you need before you make that recommendation. Obviously, uh, we always encourage that you follow, uh, recommendations made by the city commission, but you are not beholden to that. There's nothing in state statute that requires you to follow that timeline. Um, if you are requesting more time, um, you potentially don't need to make a continuance because you're not required to make a recommendation at this time. So you're basically just saying, hi, city commission, um, we're listening to your timeframe, but we don't think we can make it in that timeframe. So we request that you just discuss and give us some more time. Um, just make an official statement, um, that we have more time to work on this. Um, so with that request, I don't think you need to, to continue the item. I would recommend if you do want to make it as clean as possible. Um, if you scroll down to the, to the last page, you don't make that list of, uh, requests for what the city commission should do. You just leave it at the, uh, numbered list on the bottom of the first page. Uh, and then do request that, uh, this planning board continues to, to work on it with more time, if that's what you're looking to do. Um.
With, and I don't think that is, Matthew. So the, the, the point, the main point of the, of the memo, again, I will go back to, I don't think continuance gives us anything. We don't really need more time. We need, what we're trying to do is tell the commission, we now need you, as a matter of fact, we want less, I mean, we, we at this point want the city and Burton to do those two elements that we set up above here that were really their responsibility because again, we were not involved with the development. The city, or excuse me, the community did not have an opportunity to review the final document and provide comments and edits prior to it coming to us. So I agree with what Scott said. The continuance isn't really the issue. The continuance is only if we're trying to figure out a way to get this back to us. So I think at this, at this point, what I'm recommending going forward is we put forth our recommendation and bet through city com, just based on what the community is saying that, that the city commission will send it back to us. Um, a- after, after the edits are made. We, we don't, more time is going to be really in my opinion, not doable things we're losing to, to potentially losing two members here very shortly. So I'm going to throw back on the table for discussion. What are your thoughts about making this a vote and a memo really based on the, what we was on the agenda, which again was to vote on a growth policy recommendation? So, uh, Jesse, I'm going to throw it to you. What are your thoughts?
Well, I got lost there for a minute. Um, okay, so I, uh, I think that we should make a recommendation, I think is where I'm at, and I think we should stay the course. And here's my rationale. I attended the commission meeting last night, um, via Zoom and Melissa made a comment about the growth policy and Chair, uh, Hoagland what did mention, you know, her, um, she had heard that there needed to be more time. So I, I feel like the commission is going to take our recommendation. Um, and, uh, my other thought is if, if the city goes a different way, we just had 60 people attend three meetings. This commission's going to get bombarded with public comment, um, as well. So if, you know, I think we have a very vocal community right now and that if, you know, if worst case scenario, we make this recommendation and the city says, hey, thanks a lot. We're not, we don't agree, um, and we're going to pass this. I think they're going to hear it about it. And I don't, I don't think they, I trust that they would not do that is kind of my thought. So I think we should stay the course, um, and, and make the recommendation.
Thank you. Uh, Shannon, got any comments on that, on the move forward with the recommendation or not?
Uh, I don't have any comments, no.
Okay. Um, well, thank you. Melissa, what are your thoughts about going for a recommend instead?
I mean, at this point, I can imagine every possible scenario having equal chance of happening. So you know, I guess the bottom line is would you be okay with it just like it is right now? This is what I'm asking myself versus the one option we haven't talked about, which is just voting the whole thing down. That was something that Matthew brought up that we didn't really talk about, like we just vote not to recommend this growth policy. And then the next agenda, we put it on this memo on as an agenda item and we, I mean, I don't know what that's going to do timeline wise. Like, does that start a timer ticking and now the commission has to make a vote and we don't have time to meet like? Um, I feel like sometimes we're surprised how timelines are working against us at inopportune times when we're trying to do the best by our community. And so at this point, I can imagine every possible thing. So I feel like I've seen every possible thing almost on the commission. Um, but that's one thing we haven't talked about was just voting the whole thing down.
Uh, we, we could do that. I think that would be, um, yeah, we could do that.
So I don't know what the answer is, Brian.
Okay, um, my recommendation is that we go ahead and vote with a recommend. Um, we changed these, we changed these, um, requests to recommend. I think I agree with everybody. I think the city outcry if this did not come to us and give another opportunity, I think would be significant. And or if the, um, city commission decides not to give this back to city and the city in Burton, I think we would have, um, I think we would have, um, a pretty big public outcry. So I think it's worth the wager. Um, we could vote it down, um. Um, I'll, well, I, I want, I want to try to keep moving. So let me throw that out there. Does anybody have a yay or nay about voting? So we're going basically with option three, where obviously I think we're not going to approve it. So that's next. But on not approving, does anybody want to go, does anybody have a comment on that, which I will say is in favor of that at this time?
I guess I have a question about voting it down. Um, and maybe this is for Matthew. What? I mean, the, the commission does not have to take our recommendation. So it's almost an equal risk, right? Um, I mean, we could vote it down and they could say, okay, thanks, but we're going to go ahead and do what we're going to do anyway. Or we could recommend this and at least they have something to, uh, understand. Um, you know, at least we have, there's more depth to our comment to them. Um, and it can still go bad. So I guess I, I, um, I guess my concern is if we vote it down, we haven't given any voice at all. Whereas we vote to recommend with a memo, at least we have an explanation with some, some, uh, depth to it.
I, yeah, I, I, I would agree with that. I think at least here we can let our intentions be known. And also, you know, I'll say it, I don't think, I mean, there's a lot of really good stuff in this document. There's a lot of good stuff. And so I hate to lose that. So, um, let me ask you, is, is there anybody else that has a opinion about wants to talk more about potentially just voting this down? Okay, hearing nothing. Um, this is what I'm going to recommend going forward. I want to make sure that we've gotten all of the comments that what we want to get in this memo. Um, I think we all agree, I think we've, for the most part, agreed. Again, we can, you can disagree by your vote, but I don't think we're going to put any type of deadlines on this. Um, I think we've adjusted what the main emphasis is. Um, I'm happy to get back, I, I do before we go down this next route, I did say I would get back to this point, um, and open it up for any discussion that somebody may want to have based on Shannon did make the point about, um, not going forth with this memo then, and instead we working through, uh, the comments as a board. Does anybody want to discuss that and or pursue that option at this time?
Um, uh, Brian, I have a comment.
Go ahead.
And would you mind scrolling down to the, the last, uh, couple paragraphs of your memo, please?
Sure.
I, I had some thoughts and I had mentioned it previously in some comments that I think a lot of the advisory board comments to the planning board um, had a lot of, uh, edits already. Um, and that it seemed like it would be pretty easy to take their existing edits and, and put them into the draft. So I don't know if that is something the city staff, we could recommend the city staff adopt the edits of the advisory boards or if we could recommend, uh, consideration of the advisory boards editing certain sections to make it easier. Um, there was a lot of excellent content and a lot of work that already has gone into that. And I wonder if there isn't a way to reflect that in this last paragraph. And again, if we're now recommending, maybe we are recommending that, uh, as part of the, um, you know, editing the document, it, they, they take directly from the recommendations of the advisory board comments.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. My, my intent, and then maybe I should have said this upfront, my intent is to provide all of the public comments. So all of the written comments, all of the, now, now Burton has received through Matthew. Matthew has been providing to, to Burton and, and the city has all of the comments to date. So, so yeah, I think the expectation is that's what they're using as their foundation. Um, one thing, again, I don't want to get into the translate and defend. There are some very good comments, but I will say there are probably some comments in there that don't fit and aren't appropriate. So again, I want the city in Burton and who worked through this entire process, have all of the inputs from the entire community to take that into consideration. Um, so I'd rather not, so I'm, again, we'll provide all that information to Burton. But we're going to really rely on them to, to, to look at it. And then when we get the final draft, we can relook at it. And if we think they really missed the mark, or if one of the boards think they really missed the mark, we can, we can readdress it then.
Okay, so you don't think it's worth putting that in the memo?
I don't, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to get too involved with the how. I mean, we're, I mean, we're already kind of telling them what to do. I think if we go to that next layer of the how, it's, we start losing, as Melissa said, what the intent is that we're really trying to drive with this memo. They'll get the comments. I mean, I, they'll get the comments now, whether they decide to implement them or is up to them really. Um, I, I can't direct them. We can't direct them to do that. As, as Scott has made out and stated, we, they don't work for us. So um, all we can do is give them to them and ask to consider. And, and I, you know, when, when I'm sure I'll be asked to speak at the next commission meeting and, you know, I'll say that's the intent is we've, we've collected an incredible amount of great data that, that, that they have access to and, and we want them to use that as the starting point. So we've already done some of the legwork for them by collecting.
Um, Brian?
Go ahead.
I just have, uh, one positive comment that.
I just have one positive comment that I meant to mention earlier in that, in regards to the public comment, and I wondered if we could sneak it in into our memo somewhere, just to reflect that out of all the city boards, we had one, two, three, four, five, six, six of the boards give us feedback, and three other entities with feedback. And, you know, I think that's a really good reflection of participation by other city boards. So it's not all.
Yeah, again, I didn't, I didn't wanna get a deep, I didn't wanna start getting into detailed breakdown of how many comments, how many pages we got. I just did say that, you know, public and city board input was significant. Again, I'd recommend we don't, I'm sorry, I don't wanna be the guy that says no, but again, I'm trying to really streamline what we're trying to get across. I agree, input has been phenomenal, and in the city commission, and Burton and the city are all gonna see it, and we're gonna see it, we've seen it. So, I, I, I agree with that, but I don't think it's appropriate for the memo.
Can I make a motion, Brian?
Yeah, let me, let me just double-check my notes, I'm just double-checking my notes to make sure that I got the main meat of the, of the changes that were recommended. Sorry, just bear with me for thirty seconds, Scott.
And Shannon had a comment.
Okay, thanks. Okay, then, before we make a motion, Shannon, go ahead and you make your comment.
I, I just wanna say one last time, I, I feel it is a timing issue. I, I'm supportive of requesting more time from the commission. And again, I feel like it is our role as the planning board. I think this memo outlines what we need to focus on. And if we have more time, I think we have a, an amazing board that can disseminate through these eight items that have been identified. I think half of those are pretty straightforward and very easy, and will take very little time. I think the top four, certainly if we spend some time as a board, I think we can provide some very good recommendations to the, to the city commission, and, and have the, the plan revised to state what the community's desires are for those four items I yield.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna end discussion now for a, for a motion. Scott, do you have, you'd like to make a motion?
Yeah, I would make a motion to support this letter go to commission. I don't have any modifications. I don't know if you can do a split screen, so we can kinda see what the whole thing says from page to page?
I must be old-school. I have the only printed-out copy.
Yeah, I do too. Yeah, I, I don't have those skills, unfortunately, Scott, with, with, with this, I don't think.
Oh, you got a view, I think, and then you can split.
Yeah, I'm not in word, I'm in my great.
Well, from what you added before, I could, you know, I'll, I'll yield to the comments and say, you don't need to add the city manager. There's consensus that that doesn't be added, fine. I do like the seven topics or eight topics, I can't really tell what are there. I could go either way on deleting the last paragraph to kinda clean it up.
So you're
Making a mo-
Trying to understand your motion.
Making a motion, I'll just keep it clean. I'll make a motion to delete the last paragraph in this and recommend that we make a motion to send that on to the commission.
So you're saying you're recommending deleting the last paragraph? So first of all, are you making a rec, are you making a motion to recommend?
Yes.
So this is a recommendation at this point, and you're saying you're, you're, you're making a motion to recommend, but recommend with the deletion of the last paragraph?
Starting with the planning board, therefore requests delete that whole paragraph.
So you're saying we should not ask for them to send this back to the planning board?
I, I think that when we present this, we can all make public comment at that point in time. I think the public comment's gonna want that. I think this gets in the weeds.
Okay, so a motion has been made to approve this memo. Well, let me actually go to the, I'm gonna pull out the MCA here, 'cause we're at this point. So, what we're doing is, according to Montana Code Annotated, we have three, again, just bear with me here, three things that we can do. We can basically recommend it be adopted, not adopted, or recommend the governing body take some other action related to preparation of a growth policy. So essentially, what we're doing is we're taking that third option, is we're recommending via this memo that the governing body takes some action related to the preparation of a growth policy. Scott's motion, though, is doing this, but deleting the last paragraph. So that's the motion. Is there a second on that motion?
And including all the additions that you put in those eight topics, Brian, you've added to it as well.
Yes, yeah, and, and let me put it that way, and I'll clean them up a little bit, too. I put those in just sort of as placeholders, I'll make it look like.
But I think they're, they're acceptable.
Okay, okay. So that's the motion. Jesse, please be sure you capture all these motions, if you would, in the minutes, too, if you could help me on that. So, first motion from Scott, is there a second motion? Okay, no, not seconded. So, does that mean is there somebody that wants to have more discussion, or does somebody wanna make a different motion? I don't have any more for discussion at this point. So I think we need somebody to make a motion on how to proceed.
And Brian, if I may, as the chair, you are also welcome to make a motion if you would like to do so.
Thank you. I, as the chair, then, will make a motion to approve this memo in total as a recommendation to the city commissioned, that we are recommending the governing body take some other action related to preparation of the growth policy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Scott. Matthew, just for clarification on rules here, because we did public comment earlier, and because this was on the agenda, we do not have to do public comment at this time?
That is incorrect. You must take public comment on this item as if it's a separate agenda item.
Okay, all right. So we've got a first, we've got a second. I'm gonna open this up for public comment. I am gonna limit this, though, to three minutes, please, per person. Let me get my three-minute timer here, just because of time here. Okay, so if you have a public comment, please raise your virtual hand and be recognized. So we have Jennifer Magic. Please state your name, your address, and make your comment.
Thanks, Brian. Jennifer Magic, 624 South Third in Bozeman. Boy, I, I, I just can't help feel that in some ways you're making this more difficult than it has to be. I, I, I agree with the combination of what has been said tonight. I think Matthew, you said something very clearly, not so long ago, that the planning board could simply make an official statement requesting more time. And I think that is key. You guys clearly need more time. And it seems to me that the city commission is gonna grant that. I also agree with a combination of what Shannon and Jesse have stated. And Jesse, you talked about simplifying the message and simplifying the document. And I really think that there, that will be extremely beneficial to the public. This process in, in itself has not been simple. Tonight has been very confusing. And to something you said, Shannon, I think the planning board can play a very important role in establishing general themes. You guys have received a tremendous amount of public input, and I think part of your role can be distilling some of that public input and coming up with themes. And I think, you know, some of the themes we've heard are prioritizing infill and redevelopment, doing things to reduce sprawl, protecting the environment, providing and prioritizing affordable housing. So, if you have future meetings, can come up with some very basic themes that you pass on and ask your consultants to take those themes and weave them into a new draft. I think you're gonna be in a better place. Right now, you're giving the commission and the consultants some direction, but you're missing an opportunity to give them substantive direction on comments that you've heard from the public. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I think Jonathan Hedinger, go ahead.
Yeah, Jonathan Hedinger, 519 West Park Street. I wanted to agree with what Jen just said. And then I also wanted to agree with Shannon's idea that I think the planning board really should try and play as big of a role in this as possible. I know it's overwhelming, there's a lot of comments that you've received so far, but I think the planning board, I trust the planning board as volunteers who care a lot about our community, who have all these different experience in all these different areas. And I trust all of you to listen to the public, figure out what they're saying, and then work to make the document better. And maybe that means working with, getting the comments, and then saying, okay, Matthew, or, okay, Burton Planning Services, like, can we incorporate this and then make changes that way? Or is there a way, like, one of the ways that the county does it, I think is really effective, and it's kind of a slog, but it really makes it really, it doesn't involve quite as much time, I think, but I think that if you just would have public hearings, go through your document that you have, that Jesse's typing out, and just say, okay, like, get all those, then have another meeting, or another two meetings or three meetings, to go through each of those documents and see, or each of those comments, and see how the document could be changed to address those. And I know that's a lot of work. So I guess I just think, I trust the planning board to really do a good job. And I think that the more involved you are in the process, the better the end, the end result will be. So I just think that maybe doing something like that, one of those ideas, either working with city staff in Burton to improve the document, or just going through the comments, and having a few work sessions to just kinda go through that after you close public hearing, and then present it again to the public. I think that something like that would have a really good income or outcome. And I just really think, thank you for all your time on this, and really appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, Sarah Stans, if you'd like to make your statement.
Are you, are you having a clock run? It doesn't seem to be going. I just didn't see the clock run.
Whoop, it's going, yep.
Okay.
I just reset it. Sorry, Sarah, go ahead. Yeah, I don't know if it might be too small. Let me try to blow it up here, sorry. Let's do that. There we go. Sarah, would you like to state your name, address, and make a comment, please?
Yep, Sarah Stans, 217 Southeast Street. Just participating in all three of your public engagements. And it really, it, it really is an immense amount of input to consider. And I think you guys are really diving into it quite well and trying to put in these processes that best serve our community. And I just, I, I do wanna interrate what Jen, Magic, and Jonathan, they've, they've touched on this, and just that you, you to me are the best position to represent me as the community member. I feel that you've spent hours upon hours reading those comments, being the interface of those comments. You live here, you are here, you're the voice of us. And to hand it back to Burton, I feel like we are gonna get another semi-shallow engagement, and maybe back, not to where we started, but potentially in a similar position, asking similar questions. And one thing that I thought that was really missing from the growth policy was this guiding values statement, you know, like all the nitty-gritty of the goals and the other, the priorities for buildings and the infrastructure and everything else. But like, the essence of us and what we value and what we want, besides all the jargon and the terminology and the policy. But carrying that through this document can't be done by consultants. They don't understand our vision. They're giving us a very generic perspective on city from an outsider's point of view. And I just hope that you can find a balance, and I know this is really messy waters, of being able to be that voice and to consolidate everything that everyone has been saying into some other sort of guiding framework, besides these very high-level, technical, practical things that have to go into a growth policy. So I think Justin, or Jonathan, just hit it on the head of this, just this element of trust that you, you are able to represent us and best positioned to do that. And I'm, I'm on the board of the Committee of Parks and Trails, and I know the amount of work that we've put in, that we wanna see this thing go through in the best way possible from our perspective as well. And I know that you'd have support there. So, thanks very much. And we're here with you, and how we can be supportive, and, and that this is a document that really represents the values of all of us. Thanks.
Okay, next comment by Daniella. I think your last name was Danielle Love, if I recall. Go ahead, please.
Yes, Daniella Love. I don't know, do I need to state my address again?
Yes, yeah, please.
705 Locklaban Drive in Livingston. So I just wanted to, 'cause I, I can feel it's getting late, you know, everybody's getting tired, and I just wanted to echo the big appreciation of everybody's hard work and long-going hours of being really on tow with it, because there's a huge importance for this to take very slow, deep time, you know, to, to be very time. What I'm trying to say is that we do take time, you know, that everybody on the committee and, and on the board and, and anybody who's ever, who's a part of this growth policy is that there is a lot of time that is taken, because this is a very serious thing. This is our community. This is my children's community that they're gonna be growing up in. And I just wanted to touch base, that I was in the community meeting earlier at noon, and there was a presentation from StrongTowns.org. And it was, I thought there had a lot of great, the main, the main message I got from it was just like, who are you doing this for? Not what and where, but who? And who are you, you know, providing all this for? And it's the community, it's the people, it's, it's your grandmother and grandpa, it's your aunt and uncles, it's my, you know, my kids. Um, people, folks that live here, work in the hospitals, work in the senior homes, work in the um, that really should be um thought about and shouldn't be rushed when it comes to the growth of this community. Um, and I got a little confused at the, at the end of this is because um there's new language that I'm learning um with the motions and how you vote and making sure it goes well. So I just wanted to jump on again and just say, I think um going back to what Jessica or Jesse had said about um her perspective on the strong towns and, and to take a good, long process with um detailing this, um detailing all the ins and outs of everything. And just to echo again, thank you, and I really appreciate all the time and effort that's being put into this.
Thank you. Uh, are there any other public comments? Second call for any other additional public comments? And final and last call for public comment. Okay, hearing nothing. So again, to reiterate, we have a first, a, I'm sorry, we have a motion and a second motion to recommend to the governing body, they take some other action related to the preparation of the growth policy. That recommendation is outlined in the subject memo we've been discussing. So I am now gonna open it up for final discussions with the planning board members. Uh, I would ask you if you have something, if you, if you, uh, we'll, we'll just go around. If there's any, any additional comments you'd like to make before we do a vote. Um, I would ask you not to repeat anything, um, but obviously you can if you'd like. Um, so Scott, do you have any other comments?
Um, a few of the public comments, one was reference to policy. Um, that's, that's an error. This is, this document does not create policy. So I'd like that to be noted. Um, there was references for us to ask Burton or consultants to do work. It doesn't, we can't go to Burton directly. If we are going to be involved with Burton, we must go to this commission first, who hired through the city manager Burton. That's the chain of command. There's no direct planning board to Burton relationship. So therein lies a challenge with, with where we're at. Um, and I also heard you need to have a work session without public comment. But those are, um, I think we've discussed this in many of our public meetings. Matthew, if you have a work session, it's advertised, you always accept public comment. And maybe he can correct me if I'm wrong on that procedure. But we went through the definition of work session, which, as I recall, requires public comment. That's all I have.
Thanks, Scott. Um, Stacy, do you have any comments?
I understand what the public is saying about wanting to have the planning board give the personal touch to the, the um document because we are probably more invested in the community than, say, the consultants or even though I think they have done a, a good job of, of gathering a huge amount of information and trying to make it understandable for everybody. But I also know that we as volunteers have our own limitations. So the only thing that I would like to see is that if this motion for this memo to go forward is that we as the planning board would try to commit to, you know, getting it back and making sure that the public comments that we were, that were received are um, you know, implemented in the, in the future growth policy.
Thank you. Uh, Shannon, any comments?
Yes, just like to thank the public comment, um, comments, um. And I just want to remind everybody, we have a very talented, energetic staff member that represents this board, and that's Matthew. And, and we need to make sure we all are aware to utilize his services. And I, I certainly feel like he, he can help guide us through our involvement um with this to the finish line. So are you?
Thank you. Jesse, any comments?
Um, I just want to thank uh the public uh comment folks for your faith in the planning board. I really appreciate that. Um, I also appreciate Jennifer's comment about taking a pause. And I think we are, it, it just seems to me that we are really struggling with making a decision tonight. Um, and so if pausing is an option, uh, it's starting to sound better to me. So, thank you.
Melissa, do you have any comments?
Yeah. I am. I've imagined, I think, every possible scenario by now in our conversation. I um, I think there's a reasonable chance if we vote on this and send it to the commission that we'll never see it again. So um, and I don't know that that's a choice I'm willing to make right now, is to never see it again. Um, I'm widening the lens a lot to the beginning of before we even had a contract. And it's clear the community wants planning board involvement. Um, Scott worked hard to try to get that and it didn't work out at that phase of the process. So I think, I actually think maybe Shannon's on to something with, we've already broken down the themes, which is a big part of the work. Um, we haven't really even taken a stab at those themes, updating those things ourself. So yeah, it would take more time, a lot more time, and we'd have to ask for a lot more time. Um, we could take a stab at those themes before we send it to the commission to give them a better draft. We might not be able to do everything, but we could do a lot. And then the other thing that Matthew's done that you all wouldn't have seen is I know Matthew's going to zoning commission meetings. And I know he's helping with some heavy lifting for writing code over and over and over. I mean, I think in the last two months, I voted on what? Ten different, I don't, I don't even know, five, ten different zoning? But like, he's, we constantly are voting on things that Matthew is updating. So Shannon's also correct that Matthew has increased the capacity to help our board in a way that we've never seen since I've been on the planning board. And we haven't utilized him. We haven't even asked him to do anything for us, really. So um, I think before, I'd want to make a recommendation to the city commission. I think I do want more time because I think some of these are low hanging fruit that won't be super hard to update and document. The data's out there. We know where to find it. We just need to like work it in. That, so that's what I'm leaning towards right now, Brian, or sorry, yeah, Brian, I didn't miss out names. That's what I'm leaning towards, Brian, is like, I think I, I would like us to work on it a bit more before we send anything to the commission. And we're gonna have to ask for more time.
Okay. Uh, my comments in general, I agree with Scott, uh, everything that he said. Um, uh, Burton does not work for us, uh, commission tasks the city to do this. Um, um, we can't ask Burton to do anything. Anything that we want Burton to do, we have to ask to the city commi, city commission. Um, you're right, good for any work sessions does require, we do have to require public input there as well. So there's no, um, you always have to do, you always have to do public comment. Um, Stacy, I agree with you uh in that we're a volunteer board. Um, the amount of data that has come in and comment, uh, there's a lot. Um, and um, I will go back to a statement that Shannon made maybe a meeting or two ago that, um, you know, we have to be careful that we don't miss out on the uh silent majority. There's a lot of people that made a lot of comments that went into the development of this document that we weren't necessarily privy to. So we don't have over a year of experience in developing this to really understand the context of all the comments. I know we didn't all attend all the public works, workshops and things like that. Um, I don't personally think that we can get through this in any meaningful amount of time. Um, that may not matter. Um, again, I still go back to, it seems like, it seems like throughout this whole process, the issue has been trust. Um, it seems to me that people in the community and perhaps in the board are suggesting they don't trust the city or Burton to do this, which I find um unfortunate. I have no reason to believe that they can't and shouldn't do this. Um, granted, they might not have done what we all had wanted or expected. Um, but I think I trust the city and Burton and the city commission to do the right thing. So I think by recommending this memo, what we do is, especially because we're about to start with a new board and we would have to essentially now not start again until I would say January uh, and give, wait for them probably for a month or two, just to get up to speed for where we are. Um, I think we're better off at this point to give it back to Burton, give it back to the city, let them run with the comments that we have. Um, we do plan on the commission providing it back to the board. I think public outcry would be so much that they would not, that they would not consider not doing that. And then hopefully maybe, you know, by then we've got a new board established. People have had more time to read this. And then we have these meetings again. And if Burton and the city missed the mark, guess what? We get another shot at it. We can make sure that we catch the, we can make sure that we catch the intent. But I just don't feel like we as a board should be the ones responsible for editing this document, this final draft. So that's my final comment. So at this time, we're gonna take a vote. Again, what we're voting is recommending that the governing body take some other action related to the preparation of the growth policy. Essentially, we're recommending what was in the memo that we, we drafted before. So at this time, I'm gonna take a vote and please say yay or nay. Um, Scott?
Yay.
Stacy?
No.
Shannon?
No.
Jesse?
No.
Melissa?
No.
Brian is yay. Okay. Okay, uh, it's eight thirty-eight. I think we've decided that we're gonna need more time. Um, so I'm gonna recommend we stop and do a reset. Um, but one thing I do have to make is administrative comment that we do need to talk about um, because we're gonna have to do a hard reset. Uh, as I said, two of our board members, um, their terms ended this year. So uh, we've got three, we've got three candidates that have um expressed interest in um, in being on the board. So what I'm gonna recommend we do for our next meeting is we actually hold interviews um, if they're available. And what I'm gonna recommend is that we do, we just put together three questions that we provide to them ahead of time and basically give them five to 10 minutes to answer them. Uh, you've all seen, they're all qualified, obviously, to be on the board. So um, it's just a matter of a- asking them three questions. We can manage that with Zoom. We can, we can push them out into the lobby as we're asking those questions. Um, is everybody okay with that process? Is anybody want to do something different?
Melissa's trying to get your attention.
I remember when, when Stacy and Jesse applied, we had um people that didn't live in Livingston that were applying to be on the planning board. Or we, person that did, I just want to make sure that we're not, that we're using our time wisely and that we're that we're
Yeah.
people that live here.
Yeah, one thing I did ask for Matthew's help on is, is an interpretation of the freeholder or what that means. It says, it, it's, so I, I am getting that clarification to make sure that we, we have that. So yes, I agree with you. Um, is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Um, I came up with two questions. One is why do you want to be on the board? And third, have you read the growth policy and what are your thoughts on it? Can any, does anybody disagree with those two questions or do you have any other recommendations? Okay, if you'll trust me, I'll come up with a third question and um, and I'll email it to all of the participants. Um, that being said, so um, because we're, we're at a stalemate now, I guess. Um, again, let's all take a breather and um, so Matthew, can I ask you a, a, a procedure question now? Um, I'd rather, I don't think we want to do a public hearing next meeting. I think we just want to do a regular meeting. Is that okay that we break that chain for one meeting or so? Or do we have to do a public hearing?
Yeah, we have a public hearing on every meeting, Brian.
Yeah, can you give me more details on exactly what you're talking about between public hearing and regular meeting? Scott is correct that all of our, all of your meetings are public hearings, but just a little bit more.
No, I appreciate, now, yeah, let me revisit it. So so what was on the agenda this time was to vote for something to give to the um city commission. Um, I think we voted that nobody, nobody agreed that we wanted to approve it. Uh, we discussed um disapproving, nobody wanted to do that. And now we voted that, well, we voted against this memo. Um, I guess what we could do is recommend, I guess we could keep this on the agenda again and figure out if we want to then come up with a new memo that we want to recommend to the city commission that basically just tells them, well, by, by saying we just want more time, aren't we then asking for option three? I'm, I'm just trying to figure out.
Yeah, we're asking for a continuance.
Yeah, um, so is that just it? We ask for a continuance?
No, so you can't, because you voted, you can't ask for a continuance at this time. My recommendation uh is that because we've already noticed the four um pub, pub, essentially public input sessions uh pretty broadly throughout the communities, you continue to hold that last public input session. And then you have a planning board discussion on how you would like to move forward with the growth policy uh, without taking any sort of official vote or action uh and make a decision or discussion and then have a vote at the next meeting after you've discussed it. Um, it seems like you all need some time to regroup and figure out how you would like to move forward with the growth policy.
Okay, one, one thing, Matthew, I think that's a very good possibility, though, is that we want to ask for a extension. Is that something we could vote on at the next meeting or is that something then we could not?
Yeah, we could notice it to say that you are going to make a request to the city commission um, to extend your timeframe. That would be totally fine.
Uh, just as long as I put that in the agenda.
Yeah, and, and I'll make sure that we notice it.
Go ahead, Scott.
My question is, we, we've gotten a, a directive from commission that we're not complying with, right? Um, you addressed that?
Co- correct, that's why.
You're not going to deliver what they're expecting to see.
So, yes, we're, while we're requesting, we're, we're saying we can't. Yes, the, the ask was to provide a recommendation for the January agenda. We're basically saying we can't, by this vote, I'd say this time we're saying we can't do that. And so what we're gonna ask for at the next meeting is a request to extend that timeframe. So, so yes, we're, we're as, we're, we're asking, so yeah, I mean, they could come back and say, no, we need a, we need a, I mean, they can do whatever they want. They can come back and say, no, we needed immediate vote. But um, so I guess for, for what I, we need people to think about, though, is based on the context of what we have here is well, probably in that memo, we're gonna have to request, or in that request for extension, we're probably gonna have to ask for how, how long too. So I need people to think through that a little bit. So is everybody understand that and okay with that? So the next meeting, we're gonna do interviews and then we're gonna request, um, we're gonna have to request a timeframe, we're just gonna have to request an extension again because we're doing a potential, well, at least one change out. So we're, we're gonna Well, at least one change out, so we're we're gonna have to essentially start, start anew, so we're gonna have to request an extension. Does anybody have any concerns with that?
I have a question. Are we gonna, are we gonna request? Okay, so we're gonna do the interviews. Are we gonna make our selection at that meeting so that in January, the new whoever gets selected is ready to go in January?
We're gonna make our recommendation to the commission, yes, at the next meeting. Now, whether the commission votes to or whether the commission agrees with that or not is is obviously up to them, so I think we'll just. Uh again, I think we'll just probably hold our regular January meeting when we would. I think we just need to, we need a break and everybody needs to catch up on doing some reading and stuff. I guess. Is that, is everybody good with that?
No, thank you.
Okay, um real quickly then, eight forty-seven. Um I want to go through and see if anybody has any final comments. Uh Scott, do you have anything?
Nope.
Stacy?
Nope.
Shannon?
Nope.
Jesse?
Uh no, I don't.
Melissa?
Yeah, thank you to all of you. Thank you so much for hanging in here. Thank you.
Yes. Yes, I agree. Thanks, everybody, for your input. Great, great, great conversations. Uh I know this is frustrating. I know it's difficult. But we're all trying to just do the best that we can and and our end state is to get a good, good quality product, so thanks for everybody's patience. And and your participation. Um so we are adjourning at eight forty-seven P M. Thank you and have a good evening.